This session is called to order. We request MP Boots Malang to lead the invocation. And we request everyone to please stand and remain standing for the national anthem and tapang samorohin.
Amin allahu yirabbal alamin. Alhamdulillah yirabbil alamin. Ar rahman ar rahim alik ya umiddin. Iya kana'abudu wa iya kana'stain. Ikhidinas sirotan mustaqim. Sirotan ladina ana'amta alaihim. Gayril magduvi alaihim waladzol'in. Rabbana tinapi dunia hasana. Wapi akhirati hasana. Wakina adzaban nar. Walhamdulillah.
Maga'ba'ayang bayang ang pa'ang sa'ng awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magiliw, helas na sira'hanan. Alam ng puso, sanitik po'y buhay. Lu pang dihira, uya kanang mahitin. Sa manlurupi, ikapasi siniw. Sanagadampu toksasibo'y atisalani kaukau. Ayunadampu lakawin sa pagtayang minamahal. Angisnapakku akawat mui'tanun, ay karanatini. Ang kituhi na taro'nyakayna, pamaydi bakitini. Luwanaparaw ng warabi, pagsikta. Uy nabit sa piling ko. Amin bigaya napartaywa nabi. Angpamagtay nam, tayil sayo. Simula on hanggang ngayon. Isang naging layon. Magka'isaan magulo. Karitingan ay bagutong. Uyunayon la sa hamon ang nakaraan. Iyakus ang paganim na buhanlang. Inadampu sa muso at paniniwala. Ang ihawon para sa kabataan. Bangsamoroh ay taguntay. Luwanapawis subo at buhay. Katalayanpan, katalugan. Ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalay bangsamoroh. Bangsamoroh, bangsamoroh. Lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipil sa damdamin. Mga pangako'y tutuparin. Hang buhay kami sayoy magpamagtay. Mananatili sa puso't isipan. Ang kahapung muting kay ka nagbuwis ng buhay. Nasa piling ka ng may kapal. Bangsamoroh ay taguntay. Luwanapawis subo at buhay. Katalayanpan, katalugan. Ay atinang nakantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. Pagpalay bangsamoroh.
Take your seat. Secretariat, please do the roll call.
Roll call. Honorable members of BTA Parliament. Abbas Akmad. Abbas Harun. Abbas Basid. Abu Mujib. Adyong Rasdi. Alamiya Liza. Alauden Mosber. Ali Lanang Junior. Ambuluntu Soharto. Ampatuan Bayantan. Anetin Susana. Antao Muhammad Kelly. Antok Tumanda. Azarul Habir. Asnawi Dan. Balindong Ahmad Amir. Balindong Pangalian. Bayam Sulfikar Ali. Binito Abdul Basid. Kandaw Maruf. Kutan Otto Salim. Delenggalan Hasimi. Lumama Al Basya Ilaiha. Ibel Muhammad Nazir. Ismail Soharto. Estino Matarul. Gayak Amiruddin. Gera Edward. Haji Abdullah Khalid. Hasim Abdullah. Hasan Hatimil. Hataman Abrar. Ibay Ibrahim. Iqbal Muhager. Ismail Rasul. Chajuri Raissa. Sikiri Saripuddin. Kadatuan Kitam Junior. Karun Bayali. Karun Faisal. Lim John Anthony. Long Benjamin. Long Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose. Makakuwa Abdurrahul. Makapahar Abdullah. Malang Boots. Mantawil Biling. Mastura Eschat. Atalan Japar Apollo Mikael. Mindosa Roylin. Midimbang Michael. Midimbang Tawakal. Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Nur Reda. Mitmog Rasol Junior. Mundir Ali Rakim. Munius Jose. Oranon Suwib. Pakasa Mubaida. Pagayaw Alindato. Pak Abdul Wahab. Parkasyo Randolph. Pyang Ramon Senior. Rakim Amir Jakaria. Salinda Btsaid. Salik Ali. Semao Mariaser. Semao Romeo. Seik Said. Sinarimbo Nagib. Linding Kadir Junior. Sulaiman Ali. Sumagayan Aminuddin. Tan Nabil. Usman Anspar. Uyo Yod Sitifahani. Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillah wabina sta'in. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, with forty-one members of the parliament responded to the call. We therefore certify the presence of Gorong.
With the certification coming from the secretary-general of forty-one members of parliament present, we can now proceed with the official business of this parliament. Madam Chair. One minute suspension. Session resume. Floor Leader.
Madam Chair, we are in the reading approval of the journal of the previous session. We move that journal, we move to defer the reading of journal number nineteen of July twenty-two, twenty twenty-five session, but we move that it be approved the same.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of journal number nineteen of July twenty-twenty-two and further move to approve.
The same, yes.
Second. Any objection? Hearing none. Any objection? Hearing none. Motion approved. Floor Leader.
Madam Chair, we're in the period of recognition, commendation, memorials, and messages and communications. We move the, we would like to call MP Fahani Uyuyod to have the floor, Madam Chair.
MP Fahani Uyuyod is recognized.
Thank you, Sir Deputy Floor Leader and Madam Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. To the Honorable Chief Minister Abdul Rauf Makakuwa, the Honorable Parliament Speaker Pangalian Balindong, my esteemed colleagues in the Bangsa Moro Parliament, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Today, I rise on a matter of both personal and collective pride to commend an exceptional daughter of the Bangsa Moro whose recent achievement brings great honor to our community. It is with profound joy that we recognize Attorney Marian Esther Gi Aniseto Ginomla, Sharia Counselor, who ranked fifth in the twenty-twenty-five Special Sharia Bar Examinations with an impressive rating of eighty-five point two-one-six-seven percent, mashallah. This is an accomplishment of the highest order, but it is true, its true significance lies in the remarkable journey that brought her here. Attorney Aniseto Ginomla is the wife of Orthopedic and Spine Surgeon, Doctor Muhammad Khalil Abi Ginomla, and daughter-in-law of Muhammad Taha Abu Ginomla and Hiyas Min Sanchez Abi. The Abi and Ginomla families are from Datupiang. Known to many as Marie's, she earned her degrees in law and sociology from the University of the Philippines de Lima and is currently completing her Masters, Master of Arts in Islamic Studies at the same university's Institute of Islamic Studies. Her path towards Sharia was further strengthened when she completed the nineteenth Sharia Training, a program jointly conducted by the Supreme Court's Philippine Judicial Academy and the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos. Her career before Sharia was nothing short of stellar. With over twenty-five years of distinguished service as a lawyer and people management professional, she held top leadership positions, including Chief People Officer of Sumifro and Human Resource Director of the Fresh Produce Operations of Dole, Philippines. She also served as a government corporate attorney. With her expertise in labor, corporate law, litigation, and people management is widely recognized. She is an accredited voluntary arbitrator for labor and maritime law by the National Conciliation and Mediation Board and a certified Islamic arbitrator of the Dubai-based International Islamic Center for Reconciliation and Arbitration. She has been honored as a Fellow in People Management by the People Management Association of Philippines and received the Twenty-Twenty-One People Leadership Hack Award for multinational corporations by PMAP's Davau Chapter. By any measure, she had already achieved a lifetime of professional success. Yet, her greatest turning point came not from ambition but from faith. Born a Catholic, Attorney Ginomla embraced Islam in October twenty-fourteen. A deeply personal and courageous decision that began her earnest quest to learn the Deen. In twenty-twenty-four, she left the corporate world entirely to dedicate herself to the study of Sharia. This was not a career change. It was a commitment to her faith and to serve her community. Her success is even more meaningful when we consider the role of Sharia counselors in the Bangsa Moro. They are the vanguards of justice in cases involving Muslim personal laws and their work strengthens the very foundation of our Bangsa Moro autonomy. Passing the Sharia Bar is not merely a personal milestone, but it is a contribution to nation-building and the continuing growth of our Sharia justice system. As a Bangsa Moro woman leader, her triumph is a powerful testament of what our women can achieve. She is a source of inspiration to our daughters, our sisters, and to every young Bangsa Moro aspiring to serve with excellence and faith. Her achievements sends a clear message that the empowerment of our women is fundamental to the strength and progress of our autonomous region. When our Bangsa Moro women rise, our entire community rises with them. Therefore, I respectfully move that this Parliament extend its warmest congratulations and highest commendation to Attorney Marian Esther Gi Aniseto Ginomla in recognition of her outstanding achievement, unwavering faith and exemplary service to the Bangsa Moro. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala bless her with continued wisdom, guide her steps, and grant her success in all her endeavors. Wabilahi taufik wal hidayah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Maraming salamat po. And now, Madam Chair, may we call on MP Attorney Mikey Adyong Rakim from Memorial.
MP Rakim is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Floor Leader, Madam Speaker. To our Chief Minister Abdul Rauf Makakuwa, to our Speaker Pangalian Balindong, to our Presiding Officer, esteemed colleagues and guests, good afternoon. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, I rise today to honor the memory of my father, Haji Engineer Amir Usman Ali Panaraag Arindig Rugung Ginulungan Rakim, who has returned to his creator. Inna lillahi wa inna ilaihi radyun. Indeed, to Allah we belong and to Him you shall return. Madam Speaker, my father lived his life as a humble servant of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, striving to fulfill his responsibilities with sincerity, patience, and faith. He taught me that true success is not measured by wealth or position, but by taqwa, our consciousness of Allah, and by the good we leave behind for our families, communities, and future generations. The Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam reminded us that when a person dies, all their deeds come to an end except three: continuous charity, beneficial knowledge, and a righteous child who prays for them. I pray that my father is blessed with all three, that his acts of kindness continue to bear fruit, that his wisdom continues to guide, and that his children and loved ones continue to make dua for him. My father endured hardships with patience and faced life's test with dignity, always reminding us that this world is temporary. And the real success is to return to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala with a heart at peace. His example of simplicity, honesty, and compassion is the greatest inheritance he has left us. Madam Speaker, as I stand here, entrusted with public service, I remember that the values he instilled in me, justice, humility, and service to others, are not only personal virtues but also Islamic duties. In honoring him, I reaffirm my commitment to these principles in the way I serve our people. On behalf of my family, I express our gratitude for the prayers and condolences we have received. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala forgive my father, widen his grave, and grant him janatul fair da'os. And may he grant us the strength to continuously legacy of faith and service. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Our deepest condolences to the family of MP Rakim. Floor Leader.
Madam Chair, next is we call on MP Don Mustafa Long for his message.
Deputy Speaker Don Mustafa Long is recognized.
A'uzubillahiminasyaitanirradzim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. To our esteemed Chief Minister Abdul Rauf Makakuwa, to our Speaker Pangalian Balindong, Presiding Speaker, Engineer Deputy Speaker Bayantan Ampatuan, to the Officers of the Parliament colleagues. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. My commendation speech, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, is a commendation to all the Sharia Bar Passers in the recent bar. Allow me to express before this esteemed Parliament a deep sense of recognition and commendation for the recent passers of the Sharia Bar Examination. Though they are not present with us today, their achievements echo far beyond the walls of any courtroom. It is a milestone not only for them but for the entire Bangsa Moro community as it represents the continued strengthening of one of our region's most vital institutions, the Bangsa Moro Justice System. Passing the Sharia Bar is no ordinary feat. It is an intellectual and spiritual achievement demanding not only legal rigor but also moral discipline. This year, on May twenty-five and twenty-eight, a total of six-hundred-twenty-nine examines took the special Sharia Bar Examinations. Out of this number, one-hundred-fifty-four emerged successful, yielding a passing rate of twenty-four point forty-eight percent. To be among this number is more than just a personal triumph. It is a calling, a calling to serve as guardians of justice, interpreters of the law, and stewards of moral governance. A calling to ensure that principles of fairness, compassion, and peace are not only upheld in our courts but lived out in our communities. Well, I also extend my heartfelt congratulations to my own legal staff, Attorney Aylan Mamutuk Arumpak for likewise passing the Sharia Bar. To all the Sharia Bar Passers, your success brings honor to our office, to the Bangsa Moro, and serves as an inspiration to the colleagues and the community that we serve. Equally, we congratulate all the Bar Passers. May you serve the Ummah, may you serve and embody the highest principles of justice, integrity, and faith for a truly progressive Bangsa Moro. These new Sharia lawyers represent the continued realization of the vision set forth in our Organic Law as clearly stated in Section One, Article Ten of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. The Bangsa Moro Justice System shall be administered in accordance with the unique cultural and historical heritage of the Bangsa Moro. This guiding principle affirms our region's right to dispense justice that reflects our faith, traditions, and values while remaining consistent with the Philippine Constitution and relevant laws. The successful candidates will now help uphold Islamic law in civil matters involving Muslim communities, reinforcing a justice system grounded in the Quran and Sunnah. Their role is not only legal, it is deeply moral. It calls for wisdom, fairness, and compassion in service to our people. Honorable Members, as the legislative authority of this region, it is our responsibility to ensure that the Bangsa Moro Justice System continues to thrive, not only through sound legal frameworks but through consistent support for the institutions and professionals who give it life. Let us continue to invest in the growth of Sharia institutions, the capacity of our Sharia courts, and the development of our legal communities. Let us ensure that these passers have the opportunity to serve with dignity and effectiveness. In honoring them today, we affirm our collective commitment to a justice system that is both just and justly administered, one that upholds moral governance and the unique identity of the Bangsa Moro people. Mabruk to all the Sharia Bar Passers. May your service embody the highest principles of justice, integrity, and faith. Naway ang inyong tagumpay ay magsisilbing ilaw sa pagtaguyod ng isang progressive Bangsa Moro, isang lipunang makatarungan, mapayapa, at tunay na kaugat sa ating pananapalataya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh.
Congratulations to our new Sharia Bar Passers. Floor Leader.
Next, Madam Chair, is we give the floor to Deputy Floor Leader Se Iribani Lorena.
Deputy Floor Leader Se Iribani Lorena is recognized.
A'uzubillahiminasyaitanirradzim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. My, thank you, Floor Leader, thank you, our Presiding Deputy Speaker. My colleagues, guests of the Parliament. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. I was not, I was tempted to rise in behalf of my two colleagues who have excelled professionally in their respective endeavors. But before doing that recognition, allow me to join my brother Deputy Speaker Don Mustafa Long in congratulating the Bar Passers. I'd like especially to congratulate my staff, Hatima Jane Salahuddin, for passing the recent Sharia Bar. And to all those who passed the Bar, who will become pillars of the justice system in the Bangsa Moro, our salute and congratulation. But today, I rise more specifically for two colleagues who have excelled and have been recognized by institution of higher learning, particularly the National Defense College of the Philippines. The National Defense College of the Philippines is a premier institution that trains, defends students, and practitioners. Two of our colleagues were given most outstanding merit by that colleague. As a listed professor of the National Defense College for five years, I cannot but recognize the two for being awarded during the fiftieth Alumni Homecoming of the National Defense College as most outstanding alumni or meritorious alumni of the National Defense College. I am particularly referring to Deputy Speaker Jan Anthony Lim. I think he is now Light Colonel. And to Komodor, who is not around, both of them are Komodor, by the way, Soharto Ambuluto, both of them were recognized. But more importantly is the recognition of the performance of the Parliament. They are embodiment of the current Parliament of the Bangsa Moro. To be equated with other institutions like the Congress of the Philippines, whose members have also been recognized during the Alumni is a great honor for the Parliament. Just after six years of its establishment, we have seen our colleagues graduate from institution. There are others who graduated from the Asian Institute of Management but in a conflict area before, which has been, which has been a morpus to peace. It is very great, it is gratifying to note that many of our colleagues in the Parliament are now graduates of the National Defense College, whose preparation is to provide not only security but the defense, not only internal but external defense of the country. On that note, Madam Speaker, I'd like to put on record that as Deputy Floor Leader, I salute the two Komodor and all graduates of the National Defense College of the Philippines who are members of this Parliament. Truly, you have shown the other agencies of government that we are at par, not only with them but with all the other graduates of the National Defense College of the Philippines. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Congratulations to our very own Deputy Speaker, MP Attorney Jet Lim and MP Attorney Soharto Ambuluto. Floor Leader.
Last four messages, Madam Chair. We would like to recognize DS Jet Lim.
Deputy Speaker Jan Anthony Lim is recognized. Deputy Speaker John Anthony Lim is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh. First and foremost, I'd like to welcome all our guests in the hall today, as well as those joining us via online. Second, I'd like to thank the great mind of the Parliament, Deputy Plor Leader Angel Jose Lorena, the best and the brightest lawyer in the bar. Thank you, sir, for the commendation. Anyway, before I proceed with my message, I'd like to, on the floor, to extend my condolences to the family of our fellow Member of Parliament, Brother Rakim. Again, also extending my congratulations to the new Paneros and Panieras, as mentioned by Deputy Speaker Don Mustafa Loong. Congratulations, sirs and ma'ams. The commendation I'm about to give is for Fatima Ayesha Jawak Amirul. If you remember this girl, she was also conferred, she was also the subject of our resolution two years back. In fact, a month after, or a few months after our assumption as the second BTA, we, this girl is part of the Philippine team that won the Southeast Asian game, but in a different category. She won last time for, as a member of the Philippine Badminton Team. Now again, this girl from Tawi Tawi won yet again with another, with a different team in a different category, the Pickleball Champions League, held in Shenshen, China, last August nine to ten, twenty-twenty-five. Pickleball is a variant of the tennis family. One of our esteemed colleagues, MP Alan Pagayo, is a champion in pickleball. In fact, he regularly hosts pickleball here in Catabato City. So that is something that this Parliament will have to maybe invest on and later on improve, not only in Tawi Tawi, but in the region and the nation as well. Again, in behalf of the Parliament, we extend our congratulations to Fatima Ayesha Jawak Amirul and her family for bringing honor to Tawi Tawi, to the region, and to the nation as well. Congratulations in that. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh.
Congratulations to Fatima Ayesha Amirul. Plor Leader?
Madam Chair, before we proceed forward, we would like to recognize and welcome to the Parliament, Yusek Shina Leong of OSAP and Asek Jordan Bayam of OPA.
Welcome, Yusek Shina Leong and Asek Jordan Bayam of OPA Pro and OSAP.
Madam Chair, I request for one-minute suspension.
One-minute suspension. Please.
Before I proceed to the reference of business, Madam Speaker, I'd like to join my co-Deputy Plor, Rasmit Book, in welcoming once again Yusek Shina Leong Sampson and Asek Jordan Bayam to the Parliament. Our first reference of business, Madam Speaker, is Bill of first reading. May I move that we ask the Secretariat to read BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Eight Three. Its title, authors and co-authors of the same.
May we request the Secretariat to please read the BTA Bill, BTA Bill Number Three Eight Three, its title and its authors.
BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Hundred Eighty-three entitled, An Act Establishing the Bangsa Moro Social Equity Investment Fund for Inclusive Economic Participation Providing for the Allocation of Non-Transparable Equity Shares to Vulnerable Bangsa Moro Sectors, Promoting Private Sector Engagement Through Corporate Social Responsibility Ensuring Sharia Compliant Governance and Investment Management and for Other Purposes. Authors, Members of Parliament, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nur Reda Miswari, Randolph Palkasio, Romeo Semma, and Saripuddin Chikiri.
Deputy Speaker, we likewise request the Secretariat to read subsequent Bill, BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Eight Four. Its authors and co-authors.
Before we proceed, I think this is a private member bill, and anyone who wishes to be part of this bill may fill out the forms provided to all Members of Parliament. Secretariat is directed to read BTA Bill Three Eight Four.
BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Hundred Eighty-four entitled, An Act Establishing a Comprehensive Regional Peace and Public Safety Framework, Institutionalizing the Culture of Security and Mandating Integrated Security Mechanisms in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao. Authors, Members of Parliament, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nur Reda Miswari, Randolph Palkasio, Romeo Semma, and Saripuddin Chikiri.
Plor Leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The third bill on first reading is BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Eight Five. May we request again the Secretariat to read BTA Bill Number Three Eight Five. Its title, authors and co-authors.
Secretariat, please read BTA Bill Number Three Eight Five.
BTA Parliament Bill Number Three Hundred Eighty-five entitled, An Act Establishing a Comprehensive Regional Framework for Water Sustainability in the Bar, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes. Authors, Members of Parliament, Abdul Karim Miswari, Nur Reda Miswari, Randolph Palkasio, Romeo Semma, and Saripuddin Chikiri.
Madam Speaker, we are now in item B of reference of business with respect to proposed resolutions.
Before we proceed, Plor Leader, these are private member bills.
Yes.
And those who wish to join the two bills, may fill out the forms provided to all Members of Parliament. Proceed with the resolutions.
May we first ask the Secretariat to read the Number One Proposed Resolution in the order. Proposed Resolution Number Seven Three One, authors and co-authors.
Secretariat, please read Proposed Resolution Seven Three One.
Proposed Resolution Number Seven Hundred Thirty-one entitled, A Resolution Urging All Ministries, Offices, and Agencies Under the Bangsa Moro Government to Set Up Guidelines and Standards, Standard Date of Downloading Employees' Monthly Salary and Other Emoluments. Author, Member, Parliament, Tamanda Antuk, Kitam Kadatuan Junior, and Ma'aruf Kandau. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Abdolwah Abak, John Anthony Lim, Abdul Basit Binito, Nagib Sinarimbo, Alindato Pagayaw, Romeo Semma, Aminudin Sumagayan, Mosber Alaudin, Ali Sulaiman, Utu Salem Kutan, Mataro Listino, Ibrahim Ibay, Muhammad Najir Ibil, and Boots Malang.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer this Resolution Seven Three One to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management.
There is a motion to refer Proposed Resolution Seven Three One to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, may I move that we request the Secretariat to read Proposed Resolution Number Seven Three Seven, its authors and co-authors.
Secretariat, please read Proposed Resolution Seven Three Seven.
Proposed Resolution Number Seven Hundred Thirty-seven entitled, Resolution Urging the Bangsa Moro Government to Grant a Counterpart Fund in the, in support to the Child Nutrition Fund Program of the United Nations Children's Fund, UNICEF, in addressing the increasing cases of malnutrition in the region. Authors, Members of Parliament, Kadel Sinulinding Junior and Kitam Kadatuan Junior. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Ahmad Abbas Mujib Abu, Muhammad Kelly Antao, Hasemi Dilanggalen, Amerudin Gayak, Tawak Almetimbang, and Suwai Orannon.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer this Proposed Resolution Number Seven Three Seven to the Committee of Finance, Budget, and Management.
There is a motion to refer Proposed Resolution Seven Three Seven to the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, in the order of business, the third Proposed Resolution is Resolution Number Seven Four One. May again we direct the Secretariat to read Proposed Resolution Seven Four One, its authors and co-authors.
Secretariat, please read Proposed Resolution Seven Four One.
Proposed Resolution Number Seven Hundred Forty-one entitled, Resolution Requesting the Honorable Chief Minister Abdolwah A. Makakuwa to Encourage All Ministries, Offices, and Other Government, including the Parliament in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region, to Patronize Local Moles, Hotels, and Restaurants that Offer Hospitality Services Appropriate for Official Gatherings that Include Meetings, Seminars, Conferences, Event Planning, and Other Social Activities for Austerity and Shared Economic Development, unless for Reasonable Purposes that a Particular Activity Needs to be Held Outside Bar. Author, Member, Parliament, Muhammad Kelly Antao. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Suwai Orannon, Tawak Almetimbang, and Mujib Abu.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer this Proposed Resolution Seven Four One to the Committee on Rules.
There is a motion to refer Proposed Resolution Seven Four One to the Committee on Rules. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, the last proposed Resolution we have in the Order of Business is Proposed Resolution Number Seven Four Three. May we direct the Secretariat to read the title, authors and co-authors of Proposed Resolution Number Seven Four Three.
Secretariat, please read Proposed Resolution Seven Four Three.
Proposed Resolution Number Seven Hundred Forty-three entitled, A Resolution in Aid of Legislation Urging a Review and Enhancement of Security Measures in Indigenous Peoples' Communities in Magindanao del Sur. Author, Member, Parliament, Roylen Nendoza. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Abdolwah Abak and Nur Reda Miswari.
Madam Speaker, I move that we refer Proposed Resolution Number Seven Four Three to the Committee on Indigenous Peoples' Affairs.
There is a motion to refer Proposed Resolution Seven Four Three to the Committee on Indigenous Peoples' Affairs. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, we are now in the last item in the Order of Business. We have the Committee Report. And this is Committee Report Number One Five Eight with reference to BTA Parliament Bill Numbers Three Five One and Three Four Seven. May, for purposes, reminder and to repress the memory of our colleagues, may we direct the Committee, the Secretariat to read BTA Parliament Bill Three Five One and Three Four Seven. Its title, for purposes of press pressing our memories.
Secretariat, please read BTA Bill Number Three Five One and Three Four Seven to repress our memory.
Committee Report Number One Hundred Fifty-seven submitted by the Committee on Amendments, Revision, and Codification of Laws and the Committee on Local Government in BTA Parliament Bill Numbers Three Hundred Fifty-One and Three Hundred Forty-Seven entitled, An Act Reconstituting the Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao, Amending for the Purpose Bangsa Moro Autonomy Act Number Fifty-Eight entitled, An Act Providing for the Creation of the Parliimentary Districts in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao. Author, Government of the Day.
Madam Speaker, Committee Report Number One Five Eight, the joint report of the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Amendments will be introduced and reported to the plenary by our colleague, Member of Parliament Nagib Sinarimbo.
MP Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo as Chair of the Committee on Local Government is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. The Deputy Plor Leader, Joe Lorena, our colleagues in the Parliament. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good afternoon. With the indulgence of my co-chair, the Chair of the Blue Ribbon Chair of the Committee on Amendments, the Honorable MP Fahani Uyud, we have the honor to report to the plenary the result of the second deferral of BTA Bill Number Three Five One. And, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Amendments, Revision, and Codification of Laws, and the Committee on Local Government, to which were referred back, Parliament Bill Number Three Five One, introduced by the Government of the Day entitled, An Act Reconstituting the Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao, Amending for the Purpose Bangsa Moro Autonomy Act Number Fifty-Eight entitled, An Act Providing for the Creation of the Parliamentary Districts in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao, and Parliament Bill Number Three Four Seven, introduced by our honorable presiding officer today, MP Baintan E. Ampatuan, MP Rasul E. Ismail, MP Jafar Apollo Michael Mekail Elmatalam, MP Kalid M. Haji Abdullah, MP Sitifahani S. Uyud, MP Michael Imitimbang, MP Josei Lorena, and MP Ishak B. Mastura, respectively entitled, An Act Reapportioning the Seven Bacon Parliamentary Sits in the Bangsa Moro Parliament Following the Exclusion of Sulu Province From the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Indanao, Amending for the Purpose, Section Four of the Bangsa Moro Autonomy Act Number Fifty-Eight, An Act Providing for the Creation of Parliamentary Districts in the Bar, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes. We have considered the same and have the honor to report it back to the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament with the recommendation that Parliament Bill Number Three Five One be approved with amendments as contained in the attached report. We have provided, Mr. Speaker, our colleagues with the report of the Joint Committee. And today, we are prepared to respond to clarificatory questions. And if we proceed with amendments, we will look at amendments and would be happy to consider if it suits and better the proposed bill on the redistricting of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Plor Leader? I think for the information of everyone, the committee report was circulated as early as last week, so that everybody would be informed about the contents of the committee report.
Madam Speaker, may I also respectfully inform the body that the Honorable Chief Minister has also issued a certificate of urgency for the passage of BTA Bill Number Three Five One.
In that case, did we provide a copy to the Secretary General? Secretary General?
Madam Speaker, we affirmed that the statement of the Chair, that the Honorable Chief Minister Abdolwah Makakuwa issued the certificate of urgency and received the copy.
Thank you. Plor Leader?
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt Committee Report Number One Five Eight for purposes of deliberation.
There is a motion to adopt Committee Report One Five Eight for deliberation. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with the certification of urgency from the Chief Minister, I am sorry, Deputy Speaker Omar Semma made reservation, but since he is that around, I cannot consider that people doing that. That's an advice. If can come before the period of interrogation, then it would be all right. But not, then I will not allow an interpretation by any other time because of the certificate of urgency. I therefore move to open the period of interrogation.
There is a motion to open the period of interrogation and debate. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, Chairman, Deputy Speaker Omar Semma is the president. And there are only two who wants to make certain manifestation in the period of interrogation. I just like to allow their manifestation, brief manifestation. I first want to recognize MP Romi Semma for his manifestation.
MP Romi Semma is now recognized.
Bismillah rohman rohim. Thank you, Presiding Chair, and thank you, Floor Leader. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, we are at a defining moment for our Bangsamoro Parliament based with the crucial restricting, redistricting bill and the recent challenges regarding the province of Sulu. Supporting this redistricting measure, for me, means fulfilling our mandate as member of the Parliament to pass legislation for the benefit of the many, without compromising our principles and ideas. We were entrusted by our people to advance their welfare through laws and that duty sometimes required difficult decision. But let it be clear, exercising our legislative duty to benefit our constituents will never mean abandoning the core principles that guide us, principles of justice, inclusivity and unity in the Bangsamoro. I stand here to affirm that many support for the redistricting bills is anchored on these very principles. It is possible to do what is necessary for moral governance, while constantly holding on to our values. The bill before us is not just a technical measures about boundaries and numbers. It is about ensuring fair representation and effective governance for our people. Supporting this bill to uphold the integrity of this Parliament's mandate, we are showing that we can respond to facing realities in a way that benefits the greater good, yet still remain true to our visions of an inclusive Bangsamoro where no one is left behind, ensuring fair representation through redistricting. And our colleagues, the redistricting bill has become necessary in light of recent developments. We all know that the Supreme Court's ruling of September 2024 declared that the province of Sulu is not part of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. This decision was upheld the constitutionality of our organic law, but struck down the mother in which Sulu was included, left seven of our parliamentary seats effectively vacant. The court ruled that because a majority in Sulu voted no in the 2019 previous fight ratifying the Bangsamoro organic law, Sulu's inclusion violated a Constitution principle that only provinces or areas voting favorably shall be part of the autonomous region. Thus, Sulu, one of our historically integral provinces, was severed from Barm by legal decree and the Bangsamoro government was compelled to respect that outcome. In practical terms, this ruling meant that over eighty-member Bangsamoro Parliament could no longer count representative from Sulu. The Bangsamoro Electoral Code that originally allocated seven district seats to Sulu out of the thirty-two district seats in become seats in the eighty seats Bangsamoro Parliament. With Sulu's departure, those seven seats become an unresold gap in our legislature. We will face with a choice, either leave these seats empty, resorting in an incomplete Parliament of only seventy-three full seats, or re-allocate Sulu seats among the remaining provinces and sectors to maintain the four to full eighty-member Parliament for the upcoming election. For MPs, our mandate to serve all our constituents require that we act swiftly to ensure no area in the Bangsamoro is underrepresented due to this legal development. That is why the redistricting bill was crafted and why the AMILAD MPs under chairman Miswari support it. As reported, our Parliament had the obligation to immediately reapportion the seven district seats originally assigned to Sulu among the remaining territories of the Barm. This is exactly what the bill accomplishes. Parliament Bill 351, a priority measures of the Government of the Day, retains the thirty-two parliamentary district as mandated, that relocates the seven Sulu district to other provinces and areas in proportion to their population, the proposed new redistribution increasing district in Lanau del Sur, Magindanao, Basilan, Tawi Tawi, Kutabato City and the special geographic area. Adhered to the principle that representation should correspond to the populations and geography, we are effectively making sure that the absence of Sulu in the Barm will not disimprecise the race of the Bangsamoro citizenry. Let me emphasize, supporting this redistricting is an act of responsibility and foresight. It prevents a scenario where the Commission on Election would have held to proceed with the 2025 Bangsamoro polls with only seventy-three seats at stake instead of the full eighty, which could undermine the democratic mandates of our new Parliament. By passing this bill, we fulfill our duty to guarantee that every corner of the Barm is properly represented when the post-regular Parliament is elected. We are doing so with a prejudice to Sulu. In fact, we do considerations of our brothers and sisters from Sulu, as I will discuss shortly. But first, we must attend to the immediate needs of governance. This legislation exemplifies that we can address present realities head-on while keeping the door open for future reconciliation. It is a balance of fruits, one that protects the interest of the many and preserves our ideas for inclusion of all. Even as we proceed with the reallocation of seat, let it be known that we have not and will not turn our backs on Sulu. Our principles compare us to seek unity for the Bangsamoro homeland. The very soul of the Bangsamoro struggles is inclusivity and self-determination. Thus, the fight for Sulu's inclusion in our Bangsamoro regions now lies with us. The Bangsamoro from the mainland and our other islands provinces, we welcome Sulu with open arms. We carry this cause on behalf of our Taos of Britain, respecting the right to decide their political future, yet presently hoping and working for our family to be made war again. In this regard, Mr. Speaker, allow me to highlight the silent points of the resolution that some of us in this august body have prepared and well posed for. This resolution charts the path for Sulu's eventual return to the Barm. This is why affording our principles become concrete action. We legislate not only for today's needs, but also for the just and inclusive future we ambition. The resolution on Sulu's inclusion calls for several key measures. Calling for a privacy site in Sulu for rejoining Barm, we urge the national government in coordination with the Bangsamoro government to hold a fair and peaceful privacy site in the province of Sulu at the appropriate time. This privacy site will allow the people of Sulu to exercise their democratic right to rejoin in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region. We seek to do this in accordance with the peace agreement and Constitution. Heading the Supreme Court, emphasize on the consent of the government, the goal is to right the historical anomaly where Sulu was separated, despite the paternal bans, we're optimistic that even given this chance in the future. Number two, ensuring proportional parliamentary representations for Sulu. The resolution affirmed that once Sulu returns to Barm, the number of seats in Parliament will be increased commensurate to Sulu's population so that they are fairly represented. We will not simply take away the seats from the province, rather we work for Congress to enact law or related statutes if necessary to expand our Parliament in line with the population-based representation. For the context under the original big framework, Sulu... Mr. Speaker, honorable colleagues, in closing, let me reiterate that our support on the redistricting becomes from a place of conviction to afford moral governance, fair representation and stability in our region during a turbulent time. It is also to support, not compromise, our ultimate vision, a just and inclusive Bangsamoro where all our people, including Taos of Sulu, share in the benefits of autonomy and development. I call on all of you to join the supporting this measure. By doing so, we affirm that the Bangsamoro Parliament is capable of responsive legislation grounded in principle. We declare that the Supreme Court ruling can break the bonds of brotherhood among the Bangsamoro. And we show our people and the whole country that we honor our oath of office, to enact laws for the welfare of our region without fear of favor and without abandoning what we stand for. Insha'Allah, Sulu will once again take its seat in this chamber in the near future. When that day comes, we shall adjust and expand our Parliament gradually to make room for our returning family. Until then, Mr. Speaker, we will continue to govern with no dover standards, serving our provinces and sectors we call dedication, including those currently outside our administration. Brothers and sisters, let us move forward with hope and determination. Let us fulfill our mandate to the Bangsamoro people today by passing the redistricting bill and keep our eyes on the brighter horizon of tomorrow, where the Bangsamoro is finally complete. Wa billai taufik walidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much, MP Romi Semma.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We only have one colleague who wants to interpretate, and I will allow him now because he is present. I will move that I recognize Deputy Speaker Omar Semma to interpret.
Deputy Speaker Omar Semma is recognized. Do you need more time to discuss this?
Thank you, Floor Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker. This will be very brief. I will just take the floor to prefer the questions being asked by our constituents in Kapai and Tagolowan in Lanau del Sur. This is, this representation has been approached by the constituents in the said municipalities to bring to the attention of the plenary the issue on, the issues they raised practically to be candid and specific, they are raising the issue of gerrymandering. Madam, may I ask whether or not the proponents would like to, would allow me to prefer several questions?
Proponent?
Gladly, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, in BTA 58, I hope you are aware that District Two of Lanau del Sur was clearly defined, which include the municipalities of Kapai, Lanau del Sur, Tagolowan Two, Marantau, Sagyaran and Piagapo. Are you aware?
Yes, yes.
And from there, it appears that in the committee report, the committee had already approved to include Kapai in the, in District Three, originally from District Two.
Kapai?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
And in the original versions of, I think, BTA Bill Number 347, the, the original version was to include Tagolowan in District Three.
That, that is correct, Madam Speaker.
But in the committee report, it turned out that Kapai was, is the municipality that is now included in District Three. And that is because during the consultation in Lanau del Sur, the people in the municipality of Tagolowan and Kapai, practically municipality of Kapai, also rejected the diversion in BTA Bill Number 347. Am I correct?
If you are referring to the public consultation held in the Mindanao State University, yes.
Why? Is there any other public consultation held in Lanau del Sur?
There was a consultation with the provincial governors held by the Joint Committee in Manila.
Provincial governors?
And the mayors of Lanau del Sur.
And the mayors of Lanau del Sur.
And that's where we received some of the position papers, which is now reflected in the committee.
Yes, may I be clarified that in the, in the first public consultation in Marawi, the constituents rejected the version in 347? Am I correct or am I wrong?
Madam Speaker, the original venue for the consultation, as requested and manifested by the Deputy Speaker Udensumagayan, was supposedly in the social hall of the provincial government compound. Subsequently, a request was made to hold it at the Mindanao State University. So there was a strong protest from some of the sectors in the province of Lanau del Sur. And as a result of that, they did not attend the consultation at the Mindanao State University.
So they did not attend the consultation? That is because of what reason?
The sudden change in the venue.
The sudden change in the venue. So, you are saying now that it is not true that they protested as to the separation of Kapai from District Two?
Far from it, Madam Speaker. What I'm, what I'm saying is that there are varied positions as far as the configuration of the districts in Lanau, and in particular, the second and the third parliamentary district of the province of Lanau del Sur. It is not just a single position expressed by one constituency. It was a varied position expressed by different groups, including local government units in the province of Lanau del Sur. And therefore, the work of the committee is to weigh the positions expressed and by a majority vote, take the appropriate position. And, and what the committee has done is to subject it to a vote, and which we now obtained. So, so what is reflected in the committee report is the common position of the members of the joint committee, based on the positions expressed by different sectors in the province of Lanau del Sur.
So when you say different sectors, because later, later in the part, you, you also consulted with your elected local leaders?
Yes, Madam Speaker, that is true.
There was, was there any direct consultation again with the people of Kapai and Tagoluan?
There was a consultation as held in the Mindanao State University.
Were you not, was, was it not more proper that when you heard that there was objection from the people of Kapai and Tagoluan, was it not more proper to directly consult with the people then?
We, we've spoken to some of them. In fact, some of them are very good friends who approach us in this hall.
When you say spoken, was it in the context of a public consultation or public hearing?
There was no time anymore for doing the public consultations. We've made announcements earlier. In fact, the position of my co-chair is that we will no longer go through the process of public consultation, because the original bill has gone through extensive public consultation. But just the same, I asked very strongly that we still allow public consultations. And that's the reason why we went to Lanau del Sur and the different areas to hear the sentiments of our people. So I, I think we've done the process. The judgment call, of course, is made by the members of the committee.
Yeah, we, 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 we understand that. However, I think personally, if there was a clear objection from the people of Kapai and Tagoluan, it would have been more proper if some members of the committee went to Kapai and Tagoluan to hear the sentiments of the people. In this case, what you heard, you decided after you have met with the elected local leaders, and I think the people of Kapai deserves to be heard on this matter. Madam, let me proceed, Madam Chair. Now, in this case, this representation, including the other representatives of the Moro National Liberation Front, have been openly objecting to this, to the effort of the chief minister, I mean, the priority of the chief minister to, to reallocate or pursue the redistricting. This representation, Madam Chair, I think, yeah, this representation is somehow surprised that we decided to redistribute these seats allotted for Sulu in the mainland, Madam Chair. It would have been better if we distributed these seats in the islands, in the island provinces, in the island, in the island of Basilan, there are still Tausug there. A majority of the population of Basilan are Tausug. In Tawi-Tawi, there are also Tausug representatives there. I think, Madam Chair, let me just express, I will add my interpolation here with, with this strong note, Madam Chair. The Moro National Liberation Front strongly objects to the reallocation of the district seats allotted for Sulu in general, worsely because, we object worsely, because we allocated the seats here in the mainland. We did not allocate the seats in the island provinces where there are still Tausug, Madam Chair. It would have been more proper, we could have, the position of the MNLF could have changed if the seven district seats had been distributed in the island provinces, Madam Chair, to reflect our so-called inclusivity. We, we, we have, the, the use of the word inclusivity is now a mere lip service, Madam Chair. It's now a mere lip service. There, there was a chance for this region, for the leadership to be, to be, for the BTA to be really inclusive, if we decided, if you decided to reallocate the seats in the provinces instead of the mainland, Madam Chair. Moreover, Madam Chair, I believe that the proper thing for us to do here is to realize that these seven seats allotted for Sulu has been, has been given to the province where the revolution started, Madam Chair. We're taking away their right, I mean, their historical right to be represented in this parliament with permanence, Madam Chair. The Commission on Elections have declared that we can proceed with the elections even without the redistricting. And I believe that is the key word there, coming from the institution of government that is in charge with the conduct of election. And therefore, Madam Chair, I believe it behoves upon us to reconsider our position to stop the reallocation of the district seats allotted for Sulu.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Speaker.
Madam Chair, we will softly but firmly respond to the remarks of the deputy speaker. First, it is not true that we simply reallocated the seven seats originally taken from Sulu only for the mainland. We've allocated one seat for the province of Tawi-Tawi and one seat for the province of Basilan. Secondly, we cannot reallocate all of the seven to the two island provinces, because this would violate Paragraph 2, Section 10 of Republic Act 11054, which sets the requirement for population for each parliamentary district. As of today, the population for Tawi-Tawi is just at over 400,000, while that of Basilan is at 500,000. And therefore, the maximum number of seats that can be allocated to the province of Tawi-Tawi would be four, and the maximum for Basilan would be five, still short of the whole seven seats. What we've done is to distribute one seat for all of the remaining territories of the farm in the following manner: one for Tawi-Tawi, one seat for Basilan, one seat for Magindanao del Sur, one seat, one seat for Magindanao del Norte, one seat for Cotabato City, one seat for the special geographic area, and one seat for the city or the province of Lanau del Sur. More than that, and as a response to the popular concerns expressed by our colleagues from Sulu and the Moro National Liberation Front, we provided Section 3 in the, in the redistricting bill as a transitory provision. And this one states, "In the event that the province of Sulu rejoins the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Congress may allocate the appropriate number of parliamentary district seats corresponding to the population and other equitable requirements of the law." So if Sulu decides to rejoin, there would still be seats appropriate for the number of population for the province of Sulu. That is all, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, proponent. Floor leader?
Madam Speaker, we still have one colleague who wants to interpolate. May we recognize Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali?
Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali Jr. is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Chair, Madam Presiding Officer, I prepared, actually up to Chapter 4, but I shortened to Chapter 3. By the way, before we start, may the chairs of the joint committee accept some clarificatory questions?
Gladly, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
May the chairs affirm in this august body that the provisions of the joint committee report comply with the provisions of the BOL with respect to redistricting. By the way, may I ask the chairs what are the requirements provided for under the BOL when we elect a law on redistricting?
Madam Speaker, there are just two requisites. One is population, which is at least 100,000. Second is that, as far as practicable, and I emphasize that, as far as practicable, contiguity, compact and adjacent territorial jurisdiction. So there are just two requirements under the organic law.
When we say as far as practicable, do you confirm with this august body that not all of the areas provided upon the committee report follows the rules on contiguous and adjacent? Is that an implied admission?
What we confirm is that the, Madam Speaker, is that the requirements of the law, two, one is at least 100,000 population, and second, as far as practicable, these are contiguous, compact territories.
Madam, Madam Presiding Officer, Madam Speaker, as part of the records of the committee report, there should be a proposed, I mean, the map of every provinces, city, including the SGA on this committee report. Is the joint committee able to meet that the map of these proposed committee reports?
Madam Speaker, there is a map, but let me repeat the same. The map is not a requirement under the law.
Is there, is there a map? May I request therefore, Madam Speaker, to flash the map so that we can understand better all the specific areas that this committee, the secretariat?
Secretariat is directed to show on the screen the map?
Yes, Miss Madam, Madam Speaker, this is a preliminary question directing to the map.
So can we, Madam Speaker, while we are preparing the map, can we go directly to the questions? Because the questions may not require the map.
Yeah, please proceed.
Yes, Madam Speaker, the, my, my next question, Madam Speaker, is that the reason why the original committee report were brought back to the joint committee because of the new data from the PSE related on the populations. My question, Madam Speaker, are there changes in the new committee report brought by this PSE, new data, or wala naman? Kaya bakit pa natin i-refer back? Yung po ang aking question, Madam Speaker.
Proponent, please answer.
One, there are changes in reality on the clustering of the municipalities as a result of the population conducted, census, census of population conducted in 2024. In particular, we refer you to the districting in the province of Magindanao del Norte, and in particular, the clustering of the municipalities of Sultan Mastura, Northern Kabuntalan, Mother Kabuntalan.
May I interrupt, Madam Speaker?
Oh, let, let, allow the proponent to answer first, and you can inter, you can pound your questions later.
Yes, may I interrupt, Madam Speaker?
No, 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 let, let the proponent explain first.
Because in the, in the 2020 census, the population would not reach the 100,000 requirement under the organic law, and which is why we were happy to receive the report of the PSE publicly, so that we can put in the required number of population for this cluster of municipalities, which we have constituted into a separate parliamentary district.
Yes.
Yes, my question, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, is are there changes? First, we start in Tawi-Tawi. Is there any changes brought by the PSA data on consensus on population on the proposed districting in Tawi-Tawi? My question is answerable by yes or no, Mr. Speaker?
Please answer.
Madam Speaker?
We will answer in the manner that we hope people would understand.
Yes, please.
Madam Speaker, please.
Please proceed.
The proposition from our colleagues in the province of Tawi-Tawi is that they be allocated at least five district seats. We were waiting for the official census of population for 2024, in the hope that indeed we can find justification for increasing the number of seats, as this was the prayer from many of our colleagues. Unfortunately, we cannot proceed with the allocation of a five seat for the province of Tawi-Tawi, because as it turned out, the population for the province of Tawi-Tawi as of 2024 did not reach 500,000, and so we cannot pursue that.
In, in the province of Basilan, Madam Speaker, are there changes brought by this PSA?
Please answer.
Madam Speaker, was also proposal to increase it into five, the population for, for Basilan. Unfortunately, our colleagues from Basilan cannot find the right configuration or clustering, because they tried to cluster it into five, but unfortunately, there would be one district that would just have a population of over 90,000, less than 100,000. And, and therefore, we cannot also accommodate the request for five districts, even if the total population for the province of Basilan already reached 500,000.
Please proceed.
So meaning, Madam Speaker, in, in the case of Tawi-Tawi and Basilan, there are no amendments in the committee report? As flash, there are no amendments? Is that correct?
None, because we, we, we cannot find the justification for adding additional seat, more seats to the provinces.
That's for the seats, but in terms of population?
Yeah. What we've done in the committee report is to reflect the 2024 census of population already.
Now, in, in the province of Magindanao del Sur, may I request a secretariat to, Magindanao del Sur? are there changes in committee, first committee report and the second committee report?
The only change for the province of Magindanao del Sur is we've moved the municipality of Paglat into, ano na district na 'yun? From the fifth, from the fifth parliamentary district to the fourth parliamentary district. There's only change there.
May, may, eh, meron po bang kinalaban dito 'yung PSA census sa paglipat ng Paglat? From six, from, no, from fifth district to fourth district? May I be clarified on that?
We use the 2024 census of population as basis for assessing whether the movement of the municipality of Paglat from the fifth parliamentary district to the fourth would not substantially reduce the population of the fifth district as to make it less than 100,000.
May we know from the proponent that is this part of the, or taken from the position paper of any stakeholders or from the political leaders? Saan po pwedeng paghugutan 'yung paglipat ng Paglat from, from fifth district to fourth district? May I be clarified on that?
This was a position expressed by some of the mayors, course through the honorable MP Matalam.
Now, we proceed, Madam Speaker, on the Magindanao del Norte.
Norte?
Magindanao del Norte.
Yeah, please show on the screen.
Based on the map, Madam Speaker, is it correct to conclude that Sultan Mastura is not contiguous or adjacent to the municipality of Kabuntalan, Talita, and Northern Kabuntalan? Is that correct?
Please answer.
Madam Speaker, physically it is not. But in accordance with the provision of the organic law and to comply with the requirement of population, as far as practicable, we've included the municipality of Sultan Mastura into that cluster.
May we know if the Parang, based on the latest PSE, since it is a lone municipality, qualified ba siya maging single district? May we know from the records that what are the latest, what is the latest population of Parang Magindanao del Sur?
Madam Speaker, the population of the municipality of Parang based on the 2024 census of population is now 123,209. So it is qualified as a standalone municipality.
To put that on record, Madam Speaker. Next is Cotabato City.
Let's move to Cotabato City.
Yes. From my observation, Madam Speaker, on Cotabato City, may we know from the proponent on what barangay is number 16? Because as far as I'm concerned, is barangay number 16 there is not contiguous or adjacent to its other population, population seven? So population seven is included in first district? Is that correct, proponent?
Proponent, I think based on the map.
Population seven, let me check. Population seven is part of District 1?
One, but it is not contiguous on its fellow barangays, its other barangays like 2, 8, 3, 4, 5, is that correct?
I'm not sure if the map truly reflects the distances, because this is not drawn to scale.
And again, this is brought by new, according to your new PSA census. Eh, to by dahil 'yan din, dahil din sa new PSA census.
Yes, so there were changes made in the districting of Cotabato City based on the population. What is important to note also is Population 7 is separated by the Pulangi River.
And this configurations of barangays in Cotabato City, what is the basis on this? From the consultations or proposal from barangay chairmans or from the political leaders of Cotabato City? San, ano po ang pinagpugutan nito, Madam Speaker?
Please answer.
Madam Speaker, it is taken both from the position papers of barangay chairs in the city of Cotabato, expressed in the public consultation that we held in Cotabato City, that included barangay captains, political parties, including the officials of the city of Cotabato.
Next, Madam Speaker, is the province of Lano del Sur.
Province of Lano del Sur.
What are the changes between the committee report and one and the committee report two? I believe there are two or three changes on configuration of the municipalities of Lano del Sur. May we, may we know from the proponent?
Proponent?
The, the following are the changes that have been made with respect to the districts in the province of Lano del Sur. The fifth district, Molundo, has been moved to?
Third district.
From third district to the fifth district. The municipality of Tobaran has been moved from the ninth to the sixth parliamentary district. And the municipality Puanas from the eighth parliamentary district into the ninth district.
And the municipality of Tagal, Tagol, what is it?
Yes.
And Kapai? Add it, add it.
Kapai, yeah. That's in the original report.
In the original report. So again, my question is, yun ba ay may kinalaman din ang PSA latest census report? Kaya't nagchanges itong more or less tatlo na to, Madam Speaker?
Proponent?
Madam Speaker, we've, we've considered the population in the, in, the, in accommodating or refusing the proposal from the different sectors on the basis of a population. So we've considered, for instance, if we move one municipality to the other, would the remaining municipalities in the cluster still constitute a population of at least 100,000?
And I heard the interpolation with the new NDS Omerseba that one of the consideration of this configuration of municipalities in Lano del Sur is because of the proposals of the political leaders, mayors, and governors of Lano del Sur? Is that correct?
It's not just the political position of the provincial officials of the province of Lano del Sur, although certainly, we've taken into account the position of the local chief executives. But there are also members of the parliament who express their position on the, on the proposed districting. We have also listened to them in the same manner that we've listened to the different positions adopted, one by the Moro National Liberation Front, the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, which has a first position, a UBJP position, and a third position expressed in Manila.
Yes, actually, that is the chapter two na. I am going to the last question in chapter three, Madam Speaker.
Which chapter are you now?
No, chapter three na.
Chapter three na, okay.
Yeah. Na, yung una, ang tanong ko po, Madam Speaker, is related to contiguous and adjacent. Ang chapter one, and chapter two, dito tayo sa PSA. Yes, population. And chapter three, the Chairs declared in this August body that there were, there was a position paper submitted by the MLF, the Moro Islamic Liberation Front in Manila. Did the committee browse or read this position papers, the Chairs?
Proponent?
Madam Speaker, in fact, we have made announcements earlier on that the submission of position papers would only be up to a certain date. When the position paper was submitted to us in Manila, it was way beyond the date fixed for submitting position papers. And in fact, some of our colleagues were not willing to accommodate the position paper. But just the same, we pleaded to our colleagues that we still include the position paper of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, read by the Deputy Speaker, to become part of the deliberations of the committee. And, and so, yes, we've considered that despite the fact that it was submitted to us too late.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I now pertaining my questions to the position, Mr. Madam Speaker. My first position, my first question on based on the position paper, Madam Speaker, on the proposed districting on the Lano del Sur? Because the proposed position paper of the MLF is retain the provisions, the configuration of municipalities, but the Marawi City would be divided into two district. Did the committee give consideration of this proposed provisions? And why not? Why or why not?
Proponent?
Which one?
On Lano del Sur.
For Lano del Sur, the proponent, the?
The propose?
The proposal is to divide?
The, to have two districts in Marawi City. Ito po ba ay pinakinggan, ano po ang action ng ating Chairs dito?
We have listened to the position paper expressed by the Deputy Speaker. And we have also listened to the position paper and the arguments presented by the mayors of the province of Lano del Sur, including the mayor of Marawi City, who expresses position that he is satisfied with only one parliamentary seat for his city.
And the other, and yung ibang mga municipyo dito sa Lano del Sur ay pinagorin based dun sa committee report? Hindi naaayon dun sa position paper ng MLF? Tutu po ba yun?
We have considered the position of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, that we have equally considered the position of other stakeholders in the province of Lano del Sur.
So sa madaling salita po, dito po sa propose, approved version na committee sa Lano del Sur ay hindi po natanggap 'yung position paper ng MLF? Correct po ba yun?
Yes, that is correct, Madam Speaker. And if I may add, Madam Speaker, as we are bound by our House rules and by parliamentary procedures, the Joint Committee, as reflected in Committee Report Number 158, acted upon the motion of a member to vote on a proposed configuration of the redistricting bill. Such motion was heatedly deliberated. For those who attended, they will surely know what transpired during the committee deliberation in Manila and was then carried with the overwhelming affirmative votes. And we are now reporting it back to the plenary for consideration. So in addition to that furthermore, Madam Speaker, we have gone through the democratic processes of what is obliged upon all of us here. So there are times, Madam Speaker, that our sentiments may be heard. There are times that our sentiments may not be heard. But what is important at the end of the day is we have gone through the processes as mandated, not only by our rules, but by also our constitution. That is due process, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Yes, again, on the committee report, in the, in the proposed position paper of the MLF, the other issue is Cotabato City. May we request the Secretariat to flash the Cotabato City? Sa pagkakalam ko po, Chairs ng Joint Committee, hindi po ito 'yung position paper ng MLF as submitted to the Joint Committee. Is that correct?
Please answer.
Madam Speaker, which position of the MLF?
Yes, and Manila, ang may submitted in Manila.
The last position.
Yes, the last position paper.
Yes, we've considered the position of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front expressed in the meeting in Manila. But as a process in the committee, we will have to consider all and then subject the same to a voting. What is reflected in the committee report is the majority position of the members of the Joint Committee. Even if we have personal positions that we wanted included in the committee, if the committee, majority members of the committee does not approve of the same, we cannot do otherwise.
So a big point sa'yo, hinito, Madam Chair, duon sa position paper ng Moro Islamic Liberation Front, duon sa Manila, we as submitted the last one, ay wala po dito nainclude dito sa Joint Committee Report dito?
I, I think with due respect to the Deputy Speaker.
That's a question.
There were two mutations that were done, as mentioned by the proponent.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just remaining two questions, Madam Speaker. And second to the last question, eh, related po ba, ang tanong ko po ay, duon sa binasa ko po naposition paper sa Makatawid, no? Wala po dito nagreflect sa committee report? Yun lang po ang aking?
Proponent, please answer.
Madam Speaker, we have reflected, in fact, and it is included in the records of the committee. And we have included that position in the narration of the facts. And we have considered that unfortunately, if that specific position, that specific position, as argued in the committee, did not, did not get the support of the majority.
Okay.
What is reflected in the committee report now is the voice of the majority of the members of the Joint Committee, which is what democracy is.
And then we still have the plenary?
Yes, yes. And my last question, Madam Speaker, would the, would the proponent Chairs believe that any law passed by this August body as we, the previous law can be questioned by any citizens or any registered voters of the Bangsa Moro in the Supreme Court? If, if, if there, anyone would file? Is that correct?
Proponent? Although I think that's a given fact.
As lawyers, Madam Speaker, I think the Deputy Speaker knows the answer.
And that would be all, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali's Junior.
Madam Speaker.
Floor Leader?
I see no other colleague who wants to interplay? And?
Meron pa?
Meron pa ba?
Nagpalista pa kayo kanina?
Wala. So MP Nabirtan wants to be recognized for a brief interpretation.
Meron ako tentative na reservation kanina.
Yes.
I was weighing whether or not I will profound. Anyway, just one simple question.
Okay, please.
With the permission, thank you, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, and the committee chair of both committees. Meron la ko, I promise in the committee hearing na wala na ako itatanong, basta maisama lang 'yung about Sulu, 'yung pagbalik ng position just in case Sulu returns. Pero nababagabag po ang aking konsensya, kasi may mga tumatawag, may nababasa social media. So might as well tanong with your permission, with your indulgence. Yung bang flash natin 'yung lanaw? Kasi taga-lanaw rin ng nanay ko. Yung, yung sinasabi, lumba bayabaw, amay manabilang, and wao, hindi raw separated daw 'yan dahil may mga forest in between at walang, walang accessibility? at walang, walang accessibility.
Madam Speaker, may we respond?
Yes, proponent, please answer.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. If you, if you look at the map, ano kulay yan?
Purple.
Purple, ah, the color purple in the map shows the municipality of Wao, Amay Manabilang and Lumbabaya Bow.
Magkacontigus.
Contigus, um, I think what the, what the deputy speaker is pointing out is there is no road that connects Lumbabaya Bow directly to Amay Manabilang.
Yes.
Which is understandable. The existing road that connects the three municipalities from Marawi City is the road that connects Marawi City all the way to Wao. If you turn left, you go to Quezon in the province of uh Bukit Non. If you turn right, you go all the way to North Cotabato, then to Cotabato City. So, there's a road traversing the three municipalities, but not in the middle because you need to understand that the municipalities of Lumbabaya Bow, Amay Manabilang and Wao uh includes the um uh Magging, uh, which is a forested area, part of the watershed for uh the, the lake, Lake Lanau. So, it has not been opened uh as yet.
So, ang sinasabi po ng ating sponsor, uh, may road accessibility ito?
Via that road, uh, going from Marawi all the way to Wao. Uh, and then, uh, but, but you pass through Magging, ah, yung dyan, kasi dyan yung kalsada niya. Pero wala pang road na sa gitna ng Wao, Amay Manabilang to Lumbabaya Bow because virgin forest pa yan, uh, part yan ng watershed ng Lanau.
So, tama, partly ang sinasabi ng akin na kausap, na walang ano, forest, dalawang bundok daw yun eh.
Yes.
Ang gitna niya.
Yes, so I, I think it's not being open because it is part of the conservation area for the lake.
So, thank you. Yun lang po.
Thank you.
Marami salamat, marami salamat po sa inyo.
Deputy Leader.
Natanong pa ko.
Nabiltan?
Thank you, sir.
Leader?
Thank you, BF. Uh, one, out of respect, would like to recognize uh MP Atadies, Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hassan for a brief uh informational question.
Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hassan is recognized?
Yes, uh, Madam Speaker. My query lang ako tungkol sa uh plans sa elections, uh, October 13, uh, 25, 2025. Now we are uh magredistrict tayo. Ang ibig sabihin, we are creating new districts sa lahat ng barangganon. Ano, may, ano ba, may voter registration ba before the elections?
I, I think uh that is not part of the committee report nor uh the agenda of the, the plenary. However, I think we leave it to the comelac whatever things that matter concerning uh the elections. We cannot answer on those matters.
Yes, Madam Speaker, those questions could be raised by the Deputy Chief Minister tomorrow because the commission election, as we'll organize an information campaign tomorrow, are nor those questions can be raised there appropriately.
Doon na lang po natin itanong, Deputy Chief Minister.
So, Deputy Chief, I think uh everyone is invited to that, the party is invited to that and we will know because as of the moment, all our answers are speculation.
Will there be also filing of new certificate of candidacy sa mga bagong distrito na, na makritnatin?
Uh, we will know it from the comelac tomorrow. As of the moment, every answer from us will be speculative. So, I, with all due respect to our Deputy Chief Minister, those questions can be propounded to the commission elections tomorrow. Because they will inform us of course.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hassan. Leader?
Madam Speaker, for the last uh interpreter, ATOB will have a brief interpolation. A side, colleague side sheik from Lanau wants to be recognized. May I move to recognize him?
MP Side Sheik of Lanau del Norte is recognized? And Lanau del Sur?
Alhamdulillah, rabbil alamin, wabihiinas ta'in. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, can I have you question to my brother?
Yes, uh, please proceed.
Um, before I ask question, I have to declare that as a Bangsa Moro, we are brothers. Shekan, the Quran said that we are brothers. This is a divine declaration. It is not a constitution. It is a divine declaration that we are brothers. I have to declare also that we are fighting for truth. And I assume that we have common objective. This is the welfare, general welfare of the people and the next generation. Uh, my, Madam Speaker, my question is uh my question is uh to this redistricting, itong redistricting, ito ba ay naconsult lahat ang involved? Yung differentiiktural na consult ba ito?
Proponent, please answer.
Uh, Madam Speaker, as earlier mentioned, um, we were in a quandary whether we will go through a very extensive public consultation, uh, given the limitation of time and that the redistricting original version has done, has gone through very, very extensive consultation. The middle ground then was adopted, which is to still go through a public consultation in all of the areas, but only once. Uh, so, we've asked the deputy speaker Jet Lim to do the consultation for us in Tawi Tawi. We kindly asked the Member of Parliament, uh, Abrar Hataman to lead the consultation in Basilan. We've asked our colleagues in Lanau del Sur, including the deputy speaker, and I understand the Honorable MP Side Sheik to do the consultation for us in Lanau del Sur. The, my co-chair, uh, the Honorable, um, Pahani Uyod did the consultation for Maginda now del Sur. I did the consultation for Cotabato City, uh, and the special geographic area. So, we've done uh consultation, uh, and Maginda now del Norte also for MP, uh, Uyod and Deputy Speaker Mastura. Uh, so, we've done the consultation. What, what probably uh is also true is that we've not done a consultation for each and every sector in the Bangsa Moro because it is, one, physically impossible, given the limitation of time, it would also be impossible. So, we've resorted to what we feel would be reasonable uh and within the bounds of uh the organic law, which is to do consultation for uh important legislation. So, as far as we are concerned, we've honestly done what is required under the law.
Uh, was there a consultation with EMILEP and EMIDEP? I think I remember that.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, there was one consultation.
We issued the uh invitation to the Moro Islamic Liberation Front and the Moro National Liberation Front.
MP Side Sheik?
Madam Speaker, I asked that question because during, uh, last June 26, and there was a uh public hearing in Mindanao State University and I came there be- because uh as a member of parliament and as a Maranal uh living in Lanau del Sur. So, in my surprise, uh, we are, we are only two, the DC, Deputy Chief Minister Ali Sulaiman and I, and there is no other parliament member there. So, I forced myself to preside in that meeting, in that uh, uh, in that consultation. That was uh June 26. Then uh all uh, all uh se- sectoral of uh, of the society is there. The LGU in Kapai and the LGU in Taguluan are present and they have tar pulit. They protest that Kapai uh, hindi ma- kasama sa third district. Pinakita nila, yung protest nila, yung doon, yung representative ng wala ma- doon sa society, pumunta sila doon. Kaya nga napilitan ako pumunta dito dahil nakita ko yung hinain nila, yung mga taga-particularly in Kapai. So, may mara-mala-malaki ang discussion doon. So, in, in, hindi natapos doon, Madam Speaker, during the, during the report of the committee, committee report from Manila, we done it in Manila, kasi nakapunta din ako doon. So, nung nagreport dito, na naibalik ulit. Nandito yung mga taga-Kapai, ewang, kung alam nila, nandito, pumunta sila dito. So, I am very concerned, as a Bangsa Moro, ay matagal na tayo naghihirap. For the sake, as I said, for the general welfare of our people and the young generation, na maiwanan natin sila na maganda yung setup ng uh sa redis- redistricting, walang political cuando, walang political motivation doon. Yep, so yun ang, yun ang, alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, thanks God dahil uh umabut ako, umabut ako dito sa osapan na uh, Madam Speaker, doon din ako lumaki sa Kapai. May primary and elementary, may mga lupa kami doon sa drusy na walang titolo. Yun ang, yun ang mara. Alam ko yan talaga, yung connectivity ng daanan. Uh, Madam Speaker, can I see the
Can you show the map of Lanau del Sur?
Lanau, yes.
Secretariat?
O tingnan niyo po. Yan Kapai na yan, isang, isang Kapai lang yan, at saka yung Taguluan. Noon walang, walang Taguluan, nabago yan, isang community yan, yung Kapai na yan. Nong may redo dyan sa Marawi, dyan sa Kapai, may redo doon, natatakot kami para duban doon. Doon kami naglalakad at saka kabayo yung sinasakyan namin, dyan sa Taguluan, papuntang Bubong. Hanggang ngayon, walang connectivity yan. Kaya, kailangan yung mga ano, ang MPW, kailangan lagyan nila yan ng uh connective, connectivity para yung services walang harang. So, illogical talaga na ang Kapai, ilagay mo dyan sa Bubong sa Ramain dahil walang connectivity doon sa Taguluan. Subhanallah, ito, maski na yung mga itong masalita ko ay hindi ma- hindi connective, hindi ma- hindi ko nasasabi, pero hope na yun, naunderstand na niyo yun. Illogical talaga kung Kapai ilagay dyan sa Sigan District dahil yung, oh nga, merong uh, ano, merong uh, merong connect yun ang uh, kaya alhamdulillah, nandito ako na masabi ng mga taga-Kapai na sinabi ko talaga yun totoo, oo, for the record. Sinabi, sinabi ko na uh, for the record dahil talagang nararamdaman ko yung feeling nila na uh, as I use the word illogical na anyway, in the future, kung one na tayo, ibig sabihin ay uh, anyway, may parliament tayo, tingnan natin na maayos, pwede naman na, pwede naman yung mga amendments maorganize natin. Pero sa akin, naririnig ng constituencies ng Kapai na sinabi ko talaga yung totoo dahil taga-kuji, mga kamaganakot, tagi-tag dyan sa yung Kapai na yan na Taguluan, isa lang yan. Na kung pumunta sila sa Bubong, maglalakad sila, walang connectivity ng sasakyan ngayon. Na kung alimbawa ay maapprove natin yan, ano ang gagawin yung mga tao doon sa mga public services? Nahihirapan sila talaga, so yung moral governance, wala yung moral govern- governance na so, yun lang, lagi ko yun lang, masasabi ko uh, uh, Madam Leader, Allah is seeing us now. O ano talaga ang ginagawa natin?
Thank you, MP Side Sheik. Um, I think uh, there, there was no question about uh, just a manifestation, but uh
We, we will, may we logically respond
Okay.
To the manifestation. Uh, first is that, I know personally the good MP Side Sheik. We were together in the negotiations in Kuala Lumpur, including the extensive consultations and in the different camps of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front in the different parts of Mindanao. He has heard me argue in the negotiations in Kuala Lumpur and he can testify that I have always been logical. And so, I decried the remark that this is illogical. May therefore move, Mister Speaker, now we strike off the records, the remarks that it is illogical. If the ground for saying we cannot bring together Taguluan and the other municipalities of um, of the province of Lanau del Sur into that cluster simply because it does not have a road. First point, there is an ongoing road construction from Bubong to Taguluan and Kapai. Second point, Madam Speaker, if the basis for clustering municipalities as a geographic area or a political subdivision is road, we should have parted long ago with Wao because there was never a road prior to the 2000 that connects the old city and municipality of Marawi or any of the provinces constituting the province of Lanau del Sur to Wao. It is connected to Bukit Non and North Cotabato. But we insisted on keeping Wao even if we did not have a road that time. So, I think it would be too simplistic to say that the basis for clustering districts would simply be road. The point, Madam Speaker, is that what is true is that the municipalities of Kapai and Taguluan were originally part of the then municipality of Ramain. From Ramain, the municipality of Kapai was born out of that municipality. And from Kapai, a cluster of barangays were taken from uh to constitute the municipality of Taguluan. So, the five municipalities constituting the third parliamentary district of Lanau del Sur is in fact historically one and this is Shakba, he can bear witness to the term. That's the original name for this cluster of municipalities. So, we are just bringing it back to where it was originally a part of. So, I, I, I do not see the point of saying we are not being logical in the clustering of the municipalities. Historically, it is. Physically, it is now being connected by roads as an ongoing construction is uh being made from Bubong to Taguluan to Kapai, which would ultimately connect all of these municipalities. That's our humble submission, uh, Madam Speaker. And so, we will go back to our motion to please strike off the record the word illogical because we have always been logical.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Leader?
Uh, Madam Speaker, the verse may be our views, but this is the beauty of a parliament. All the views and good ideas are generated.
All the views and good ideas are generated in the best interest of our people. We hope the redistricting bill will be motivated by good faith and we will address all the concerns in the future. With that, since there are no more interpreter, I move to close the period of interpretation.
There is a motion to close the period of interpretation and debate, interpretation and debate. Any second? Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that you open the period of amendments.
Period of amendments is now open. Um, may I know how many?
There will only be four.
Four.
And the first to introduce this amendment would be my good friend, the gentleman from Sultan Kudarat, Magindanao del Norte, esteemed Deputy Speaker, Ishak Mastura, may we recognize him, Madam Speaker? Amendment? Okay, okay.
Mister Speaker, uh, uh, Madam Speaker rather, uh, Mister Deputy Floor Leader, I would like to propose amendments for, in particular, the province of Magindanao del Norte. I move to adopt, Mister, Madam Speaker, the following amendments to Parliament Bill Number Three Five One. Amendment to the provisions of Section Two of the bill. In particular, Madam Speaker, for the province of Magindanao del Norte, designation of district number or nomenclature to read as follows. The municipalities of Kabuntalan, Northern Kabuntalan, Sultan Mastura, Talitay will be designated, designated as third district instead of fourth district. The municipalities of Datuudin-Sinsuwat, Datu Blasinuwat, Upi will be designated as fourth district instead of fifth district. The municipality of Sultan Kudarat as a lone district will be designated as fifth district instead of third district. So as you can see, Mister, Madam Speaker, it's all about the changing of just the numbers. So it's a very minor adjustment of the uh, the, the, the number of the districts.
Uh, just to guide the, the deliberation, uh, the, the discussion, can you show us on the screen the proposed amendments? Merede ba tayo? Uh, before I rule on the, um, before I ask the proponent if they will accept or not, and the third, the original third district on the committee report will be named as fifth district.
Yes, uh, the-
The fourth district will be named as third district. And the fifth district will be named as fourth district, that's the proposed amendments. Wala ba?
Madam Speaker? Class, please, can you press the map?
Can you, can you show 'yung kuwan, 'yung clear copy na lang? Clear copy? Para lang, everybody should be guided. Secretariat? Meron bang nagkumagawa?
Madam Speaker, may we direct the secretariat to press, as required by the speaker?
But anyway, may I request the proponent to- proponents?
Proponents?
Proponents, what's your pleasure?
Yes.
With the proposed amendments?
I would like to ask the proponent for the response to our move to amend the same.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, we accept, Madam Speaker.
Um, the proposed amendments of Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura uh, to name uh, the original district three to district five, the original district four to be named as third district, and the original fifth district to be renamed as fourth district is approved by the proponent? Any, any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, the next to propose amendment is our good friend, esteemed colleague from Lano del Sur, the Honorable Deputy Speaker Udin Sumagayan, may we recognize him?
Uh, thank you, uh, Floor Leader, thank you, Madam Speaker. Ojubillah, minasya itani rajim, smlarakmani rakhim, salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh. Uh, Madam Speaker, I would like to move to adopt the following amendments to the Parliamentary Bill Number Three Five One, particularly Section Two of the bill for the province of Lano del Sur with respect to the designation of district numbers to read as follows. Uh, first, Madam Speaker, the municipalities of Masyo, Puna Bayabaw, Tamparan, Taraka, and Mulundo will be designated as fourth district instead of fifth district, Madam Speaker. Second, the municipalities of Butig, Lumbayanagi, Lumbatan, Sultan Dumalundong, Lembaka Unayan, Marugong, and Tubaran will be designated as fifth district instead of sixth district, Madam Speaker. And third, the municipalities of Pagayawan, Ganasi, Binidayan, and Bayang will be designated as sixth district instead of seventh.
What about Palas?
And uh, the yes, including the municipality of Wallace, Madam Speaker. And the municipalities of Madamba-
Wait, wait, what will be the district for Pagayawan, Ganasi, Binidayan, Bayang, and Palas?
Six, six instead of seven.
Okay.
Madam Speaker. So the municipalities of Madamba, Madalam, Bakulod, Galawi, Tugaya, and Balindong be designated as seventh district instead of eighth district, Madam Speaker. And the municipalities of Kalanugas, Malabang, Pikong, Balabagan, and Kapatagan will be designated as eighth district instead of ninth district. And lastly, Madam Speaker, the municipalities of Wau, Amay Manabilang, and Lumba- Bayabaw will be designated as ninth district instead of fourth district, Madam Speaker, and I so move, uh, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to change the numbering of the districts from fourth district to ninth, ninth district, from fifth district to fourth district, from sixth district to fifth district, from seventh district to sixth district, from eighth district to seventh district, from ninth district to eighth district, proponent?
And from fourth to ninth, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I add, that's where I started. Proponent?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Um, any objection? Hearing none, the proposed amendments from, for the province of Lano del Sur, including Marawi City, is accepted.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker, the next to propose amendment as earlier reserved, who earlier reserved is the gentleman from the SGA, SGA, my esteemed colleague, MP Jumbo Matalam.
And also from Magindanao del Sur, uh-
Um, MP Jumbo Matalam is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, will the proponent allow some uh, uh, amendments that I will introduce, Madam Speaker?
Proponent?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Uh, medyo mahaba, haba itong mga amendments ko, Madam Speaker, please bear with me.
Where do you begin?
I begin on the amendments on Magindanao del Sur, Madam Speaker.
Okay, please proceed.
Uh, would like to, first of the province of Magindanao del Sur, designation of district number or nomenclature to read as follows, uh, Madam Speaker. The municipalities of Buluan, Datu Paglas, Mahuda Datu Pandag will be designated as fourth district instead of fifth district. The municipalities of Batu Montawal, JSK Pendaton, Pagalungan, Rajaboyan, Sultan Sa barangais, Paglat will be designated as fifth district instead of fourth district, Madam Speaker.
Proceed.
Uh, can I continue all my amendments, uh, Madam Speaker?
Please proceed.
Okay. And on the second, uh, Madam Speaker, is for the special geographic area. Uh, the si- this, uh, municipalities of Kadayangan, Nabalawag, Pahamudin, Tugunan will be designated as first district instead of second district. The municipalities of Malidugaw, Ligawasan, Ogka Bakan, Kapalawan will be designated as second district instead of first district. So move, Madam Speaker.
Will we, um, build rule first on Magindanao del Sur, proponent? Uh, the proposal is to change the fourth district into fifth district and the original fifth district will be the fourth district, proponent?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Uh, any objection? Hearing none? The proposal is accepted. Uh, for the uh-
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I also would like to-
Wait, wait first, uh, let's rule on the special geographic area for the two parliamentary districts, uh, there will be um, uh, changing of the number.
Yes.
The original first di- first district will be the second district and the original second district will be the first district, proponent?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Any objection?
Non.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move to adopt the following amendments to the Parliament Bill Number Three Five One. Uh, number one amendment to the provisions of Section Two of the bill. In particular, Madam Speaker, the population of provinces of, and summation of population of districts which are as follows. A for total population of Basilan will be five hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred forty-seven. B for the fourth district of Basilan, the total population is one hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred sixteen. And the population of Maluso is sixty-six thousand eight hundred seventeen. C for the total population of Lano del Sur is one million three hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred forty. For the popul- for the population of second district of Lano del Sur, it should be one hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred forty-one. And E for the total population of third district of Lano del Sur, it should be one hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-nine. F for the population of Magging of Lano del Sur, it should be thirty-seven thousand two hundred ninety-two. G for the population of the fourth district of Lano del Sur, it should be one hundred sixty thousand seventeen. For the population of Punabaya Bow, it should be thirty-three thousand three hundred seven. I for the population of new ninth district of Lano del Sur, it should be one hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven. And J for the population of the new fourth district of Magindanao del Sur, it should be one hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-two. And K for the population of Tawi Tawi, it should be four hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred forty-five. And L for the population of first district and Bungao, it should be one hundred thirty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-seven. For the total population of third district of Tawi Tawi, it should be one hundred seven thousand four hundred forty-seven. And for the total population of Cotabato City, it should be three hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred eighty-three. And O for the total population of third district of Cotabato City, it should be one hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred seventy-three. And number two amendment to Section Three.
Uh, wait first.
Okay.
Uh, one minute suspension, I think we need to compare the- Uh, there is a motion to correct the data based on the latest uh, statistics coming from the Philippine Statistical Authority, um-
So move, Madam Chair.
Proponent? You accept, subject to
Yes.
the counter-checking of the secretariat?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Any objection? Proposal is adapted.
And second, number two amendment to Section Three, Madam Speaker. Whereas the section for transitory provision shall be transferred and renumbered as-
Can you show us on the screen?
Secretariat?
Secretariat, please, so that everybody's will be guided. Okay, please proceed, um, MP, uh, Matalam?
Yes, an amendment to Section Three. Whereas the section for transitory provision shall be transferred and renumbered as Section Three.
Is this a new provision?
No, just renumbering.
This is a whole, renumbering, and it will be from Section Four to Section Three?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, please proceed, please read.
In the event that the province of Sulur joins that Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, Congress may allocate the appropriate number of parliament district seats corresponding to the population and other equitable requirements of the law.
Um, proponent, mukhang may, ano 'yung that? Ayaw we accept?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Uh, subject to style?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay. Um, any objection? Hearing none? Proposal is accepted. Please, please proceed, MP Matalam?
Where, the, the section for transitory provision shall be transferred and renumbered as Section Three, Madam Chair?
Yes, it's already Section Three.
Okay. And uh, will also introduce, Madam Sir, a new provision numbered Section Four.
Please proceed.
Which reads interim representation of newly created districts. And the date. In the, in the event that this act results in the creation of a new parliamentary district after the deadline for the filing of certificates of candidacy for the immediately forthcoming parliamentary elections, and such newly created district is left without a duly elected parliamentary district representative, the President of the Philippines shall appoint an interim parliamentary district representative to serve until a representative is duly elected and qualified. The interim appointees shall have the same rights, duties, and privileges as an elected district representative, but the term shall automatically end upon the assumption into office of the duly elected representative of the district following the next regular or special elections.
Proponent?
We accept, Madam Speaker.
Any counter-proposals or objection? Hearing none, proposal is accepted. Please proceed.
Two more, Madam Chair, an introduction of a new provision numbered as Section Five. It is titled Effect of the New Redistricting.
For purposes of the 2025 Bangsamoro parliamentary elections, as parents who have filed their certificates of candidacy, will retain their candidacy in the district where they originally filed, notwithstanding that the barangay or municipality where they are registered has been reassigned to a different district, provided that the voting will only take place within the boundaries of the district as defined by this new redistricting law. The community shall issue appropriate guidelines to implement the new parliamentary redistricting under this act for the 2025 Bangsamoro parliamentary elections.
Proponent?
We, we accept, Madam Speaker.
Any objection? Proposal accepted.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Isa na lang po. Amendment of section seven and renumbered as section. In this proposed amendments, uh, Madam Chair, section eight, effectiveness. This act shall effect upon the approval of the Chief Minister without prejudice to the publication in the Bangsamoro Gazette or in at least one newspaper for general circulation in the bar.
Proponent?
We, we accept with qualification, Madam Speaker.
Um, let's allow first the counter-proposal of, uh, the proponent, then we'll-
Point of clarification only to the proposed amendment.
Um, Madam Speaker, uh, the gentleman DS Omar Semma wants to have a clarification with respect to the proposal and to allow a co- correct, complete, uh, appreciation by the proponent that the proponent proposed a, a, with a counter-proposal with qualifications. So may we recognize DS Omar Semma for the clarification?
Deputy Speaker Omar Semma is recognized?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, a point of clarification, Madam Chair, is uh, does is, does the proponent of the amendment still, I mean, uh, is his proposal, uh, disregarding the fifteen day, uh, period?
Proponent?
Effectivity?
Yes, Madam, uh, Speaker.
So immediate, you, we, we are no longer considering here the fifteen day period?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, proponent, what is your response to the uh, proposal of MP Matalam? Do you have a counter-proposal?
Madam Speaker, if the uh, good proponent would agree to a counter-proposal on section eight, this one pertains to effectiveness. We propose, uh, that the language should read as follows. This act shall take effect upon its publication in the Bangsamoro Gazette or in the of, or in its official website. Full stop.
Sige nga, linisin niyo nga. Walang chief minister dyan. Secretariat? Pakiulit 'yung, please repeat, uh, what has been said, uh, MPC Narimbo?
This act shall take effect immediately upon its publication in the Bangsamoro Gazette or in its official website.
So, 'yung immediately, maga- shall take, take effect immediately?
Upon its, upon its publication.
So maritin 'yung immediately. Balik niyo ng block 'yung immediately.
Yes.
Um, MP Matalam?
Madam Speaker, I yield to the proponent.
So, is there any objection to the counter-proposal of the, um, of the proposed amendment? Hearing none. Proposed amendment is, uh, the proposed, um, counter, a counter-proposal is accepted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Speaker, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Uh, the next to proposed amendment is the gentleman from Cotabato City. He distinguishes Deputy Speaker Omar Semma. May we recognize him?
Deputy Speaker Semma is recognized?
Very fierce. Yes, Madam Chair, uh, to fully consummate the, the position and clamor of the people of Kapai and Tagoluan, Madam Chair, I am making a proposal to, uh, uh, yeah, to consummate the clamor of the people of Tagoluan and Kapai. And for purposes of, uh, correcting uh, issues on gerrymandering, Madam Chair, this representation proposes to amend uh, 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 district three in the province of Lanau del Sur to bring back the municipality of Kapai to district two, Madam Chair, where it originally belongs, Madam Chair. The population will remain one hundred nineteen thousand for district three and, uh, the population for district two would be at one hundred twenty-seven seven hundred ninety, Madam Chair. So move, Madam Chair. If this is rejected, Madam Chair, I move to divide the house, Madam Chair.
Proponent?
We reject, Madam Speaker.
I move to divi- to divide the house, Madam Chair.
There is a motion to divide the house with regards to the proposed amendments on, um, Maginda, uh, province of Lanau del Sur for district two and, uh, district three. Any second? Any second? Any objection? Objection? Do you object to dividing the house? We divide the house. So, let's divide the house. Secretariat? For those who are in favor of, uh, transferring Kapai from district two to district, uh, from district three to district two, please raise your hands.
Madam Chair.
I'm a proposed amendment of MP Omar, uh, Deputy Speaker Omar Semma. Secretariat, please count. Thank you. Are we done, Secretariat? Are we done? Secretariat?
There four. Five. Five.
Secretariat, I'm asking you. Are we done? Let's proceed to those who are not in favor of transferring Kapai to district two. Please raise your hands. Picturan niyo muna. Ay, taas niyo muna. Baka hindi kayo ma-count. Pa-hani, are you voting or not? No? Okay. For those who abstain. Abstain? Two, three.
Deal, deal.
Patlo. Ab- Deputy Speaker, nakataas ba 'yung kamay mo? Ano pumoto na ngayon? Dalawa lang. Okay. Uh, Secretariat? What is the result of the voting?
Madam Speaker, the result of the voting on the amendments of the Deputy Speaker Omar Semma, uh, five affirmative, twenty-two no and three abstention.
With, uh, twenty votes?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two votes objecting the proposal of Deputy Speaker Semma, the proposed amendment is rejected.
Uh, ma- Madam Speaker, for our last person to propose an amendment, may we recognize, uh, by BFF, esteemed colleague, DS Nabiltan?
Deputy Speaker Nabiltan is recognized.
Hello. Thank you, Miss Madam Speaker and, uh, floor leader. If the two chairpersons of this committee will yield to my request for an amendment, will listen to my request for an amendments, my amendment, Miss Madam Speaker, is on, on the province of Sulu. Here goes.
Uh, what section, Deputy Speaker?
Section three ata 'yun.
Can you show us the section three?
Section three ba 'yun?
Section three.
Natat 'yung kanina eh.
Ah, yeah, that's section three, yeah.
Eto po ang proposed amendments ko. If the province of Sulu is inclu- again included in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region, whether by plebiscite or by any other lawful means, the thirty-two single-member parliament districts shall be reapportioned and reinstated in accordance with Bangsamoro Autonomy Act Number Fifty-Eight, also known as the Bangsamoro Parliamentary District Act of 2024. This was the product of an extensive public consultation and legislative deliberation. As it is now, the medyo masyadong diluted po 'yung propose, proposal na leaving it to just urging Congress. So, ang sa akin po, eto sana, na reapportion and reinstated in accordance with Bangsamoro Autonomy Act Fifty-Eight.
Pwedeng isulat, Secretariat, 'yung proposed amendments so that we can see it on the screen?
Secretariat, wala kayo.
You can, you can screenshot the-
Paki, ah, pakie. Yo, Secretariat, please take note of that, uh-
We give time to, ano? For the Deputy Speaker to, to share with us the, uh, proposed amendment, his proposed amendment.
Madam Speaker, uh, palitan natin 'yung if to the word should. Should the province of Sulu.
This is still section three. Lagay niyo section three. Transitory provision.
With open seats for seven.
Hindi yun, maano 'yan. You leave that to Congress, it will take forever.
Session suspended. One minute.
Madam Speaker, after the consultation suspension, there is an exchange of idea and we have agreed to accept the proposal last class in our board. So I think the proponent, original proponent, DS Nabiltan, agreed to it and I think we can ask for confirmation from the proponent whether it is acceptable.
We are honored, Mr. Speaker, to accept the consensus arrived at from the original proposition of MP Matalam, the Deputy Speaker Nabiltan, the Deputy Floor Leader, Justice Lorena.
Thank you, thank you in advance.
MP Miswari and the Deputy Speaker, MP Lim.
And MP Hataman.
And MP Hataman.
So, this will be the final section three?
Yes.
As agreed earlier. Approve.
Madam Speaker, there being no other amendments to be proposed, I move that we close the period of amendments.
There is a motion to close the period of amendments and a second. Any objection? Hearing none, motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading by Bibabotche, Bill Number... Assistant, hindi ko sabakitay. Three five one. I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. So, second reading.
There is a motion to approve in second reading, BTA Bill Number 351 by Bibabotche. For those who are in favor of BTA Bill 351 as amended, say yes. Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. As many as you can, say aye.
Aye.
For those who are not in favor of BTA Bill 351 as amended, say nay. Having resounding and obvious aye, aye vote, the aye vote has it.
Madam Speaker, earlier on before we opened the deliberation on Bill 351, our secretary-general certified that they received certificate of agency from the Chief Minister. This being an urgent bill, we can proceed with the voting on third reading. So I move that we vote on third and final reading of Bill 351.
Before we proceed with the final reading, may we request the Secretariat to at least show on the screen or print hard copy and we will give them at least five to ten minutes.
Yes, Madam Speaker. So we request the Secretary-General to print and distribute copies.
Session suspended for five minutes.
Thank you.
Lord Leader.
Madam Speaker. Thank you Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we are ready to resume session.
Can we have a copy of... Where is the hard copy?
Secretariat, can you provide the Presiding Chair hard copy or in the other members some copies before we proceed with the voting for a final reading?
Madam Speaker, the final copy is still being printed.
We only need at least three copies.
Okay, can we give you an advance three copies for purposes of showing that we have already printed today?
Yes Madam Speaker, we have already given the instructions Madam Speaker to the staff.
Can you show us on the screen the final clean copy? Clean copy. Session suspended.
Thank you Madam Speaker. I think we received already the printed copy of the bill. Bill, particular Parliament Bill Number 351. The status of this bill is we are now on the third and final reading. As already intimated, Secretary General certified that this is urgent. We can proceed to vote on third reading on this particular bill. Madam Chair, I move that we vote on third and final reading. The BTA B351.
By nominal voting.
By nominal voting, yes.
There is a motion to vote through nominal voting BTA Bill Number 351, an act reconstituting the bangsa more... the parliamentary districts in the bangsa more autonomous region in Muslimindanao, amending for the purpose Bangsa More Autonomy Act Number 58, entitled an act providing for the creation of the parliamentary district in the bangsa more autonomous region in Muslimindanao. For those who are in favor.
Madam Speaker, by nominal voting. Nominal vote.
Yeah. By roll call, may I request the Secretariat to do the roll call for the nominal voting?
Nominal voting on BTA Parliament Bill Number 351 on third and final reading. Honorable Members of Parliament, Abas Akmad.
We cannot interrupt the voting, please proceed. As Secretariat, just proceed. We cannot interrupt the voting. Session suspended.
Madam Speaker, we are already in the...
Session resumed.
Madam Speaker, we are now as already approved. We have a motion to vote on final reading by nominal voting. The Secretary General has already started the roll call for the voting. So we can proceed with the voting on nominal voting on this particular bill.
Secretary General, please continue.
Honorable Members of Parliament, Abas Akmad. Share me with your votes here. Honorable Abas Akmad.
Yes.
Abas Sharun. Abbas Basid. Abu Mujid. Ajung Rasti. Alami Alaisa. Alaudin Musbir. Ali Lanang Junior. Ambulutu Sohaltu. Anayatin Susana. Anayatin Susana? Antao Muhammad Gheli? Asharul Habir? Antok Temanda? Asnawid An? Balindong Ahmad Amir? Balindong Pengalian? Bayam Jolfikar Ali? Binito Abdul Basit? Kandaw Ma'aruh? Kutan Otuk Salim? Dilanggalin Hasimi? Dumama Albasah Ilaiha? Ebel Muhammad Najir? Ismail Soharto? Istino Matarul? Gayak Amiruddin? Gira Edward? Haji Abdullah Khalid? Hasim Abdullah? Hasan Hatimil?
Yes, Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hasan is recognized. You have three minutes.
Madam Speaker, my vote is no. My vote is no, Madam Speaker, as I protest to the decision of the Supreme Court to exclude Sulu from the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw. Because it is second time that the Supreme Court nullified our, just like the Moa Edi, wherein that they nullified the Moa Edi in the, saying that it was unconstitutional, Madam Chair. Because if we allow, allow and continue to accept the decision of the Supreme Court, maka mawala tama mawalan ang autonomian natin. On the data, Madam Chair, my vote is no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Minister Hatimil Hasan. Proceed.
MP Ataman is recognized? MP Ataman is recognized?
Madam Speaker, I respectfully manifest my yes vote for the BTA Bill Number 351 as amended. Madam Speaker, I am casting this vote with due recognition of our consistent call for equitable representation in this parliament. That principle is not set aside nor abandoned. Rather, my vote today is impressed by the urgency to pass this measure as a matter of mandate and governance. However, Madam Speaker, let it be placed on record that my yes vote is subject to future bills on redistricting, which must embody the spirit of equity promised by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. This parliament must continue to revisit and refine our districting measures so that every province, whether mainland or island, is assured of a meaningful voice in our regional government. More urgently, I stress that the pending 2025 election is of paramount importance. For it is through this election that the true voice of the people, especially in Basilan and across the Bangsa Moro, will finally be reflected in this parliament. Bilang anak ng Basilan, I vote yes with a firm commitment that this is but a step towards a more inclusive, equitable, and democratic representation for all Bangsa Moro. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, MP Abra Rataman. Secretariat, please proceed.
Ibay Ibrahim? Iqbal Mahagir? Ismail Rasul?
MP Rasul Ismail is recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My vote is yes. And for almost two months, we're here, hearing this very sensitive bill. You know, this is my commitment, and I was very much touched, especially during sa issue ng Sulu. You know, last December, Senator Mig Subiri filed a resolution in Senate, Senate Bill 2915. Last January 14, 2025, we filed it, but it's very unfortunate that the problem is one, no one in the House of Representatives ang nag-counter po or nag-otor sa lower house. And I can still remember, last February 7, 2025, we invited, and I personally invited, some of our colleagues here, MNLEF. Unfortunately, wala pong pumunta at nag-attend ng Senate hearing last February 7. Now, this is my commitment, that if ever meron pong ready sa House of Representatives na i-file 'yung Sulu inclusion, I think Senate Bill 2915 na naka-achive ngayon sa Senate, pwede po nating mapaki-usapan 'yung ating mga senator na maibalik ang Sulu. So, Madam Speaker, maraming salamat at inulit ko, ang yes vote ko sa batas na'to.
Thank you, MP Rasul Ismail. Secretariat, please proceed.
Jaduri Reisa? Jikiri Saripudin? Kadatuhan Kitem Junior? Karun Bayali? Karun Faisal? Lim Jan Anthony?
MP Deputy Speaker Jan Anthony Lim is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the recognition and for the opportunity to explain my vote. I vote yes in favor of the redistricting bill. You will recall that during the committee deliberations, I voted to approve the report with reservation being that the island provinces of Basilan and Tawi-Tawi deserve at least five seats in the parliament in recognition of their geographic fragmentation and service delivery challenges. Nevertheless, I vote yes today because I believe that it is our mandate as members of parliament. Finally, just for the record, I also wish to manifest that the concerns of Basilan and Tawi-Tawi remain valid and must be revisited in future legislative refinements. The unique realities that we face, the unique realities, dynamics of the island provinces, separation, separated by seas, logistical challenges, and dispersed populations across many islands require stronger representation to ensure that their voices are heard and their needs addressed. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunities.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Jan Anthony Lim. Secretariat, please proceed.
Luong Benjamin? Luong Don Mustapa?
Deputy Speaker Don Mustapa Luong is recognized.
Allahu akbar, minas sayyidah, razzim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh. Today, we are called to decide on a redistricting measure that is to reconstitute the parliamentary districts. And as a Tausog, I rise with a heavy heart. For while this measure opens doors of representation for others, it leaves Sulu, our beloved province, outside its frame. This exclusion is not only painful, but it is deeply personal. However, we did not stay silent. In fact, I delivered the longest privileged speech in this parliament at more than one hour, arguing why the Supreme Court should reconsider its decision. Moreover, I was one of those who filed in the Supreme Court to, for a motion for reconsideration. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court decided with finality. The elections for the parliamentary election should have pushed through last May, but one of the reasons it was extended was during the deliberations of the House and the Senate, they were considering that the seven parliamentary districts had to be reallocated. And that being the case, as law-abiding citizens and those who live with a rule of law, we have to support. There had been a strong advocacy for equity for Basilan and Tawi-Tawi. And I had attended the committee hearings in Tawi-Tawi and heard the voices that, yes, they wished that there could have been five instead of four, especially that the seats were from Sulu, from the islands. However, I... It is unfortunate that the Philippine Statistics Authority may have slept in its responsibility, especially in Tawi-Tawi. While Tawi-Tawi had a population of 440 in 2020, the population of Tawi-Tawi right now stands at 480, 20,000 short. And PSA in Tawi-Tawi, I hope you're listening, it is your fault. I wish you had done your responsibilities better because the population of Tawi-Tawi is so high. If you had done your responsibility, Tawi-Tawi would have had five seats. As for Basilan, while we considered all possibilities, no combination would allow for all five parliamentary districts to reach 100. And as again, as a person who believes in the rule of law, we could not simply provide for five when one district would fall under 100, as much as we also love the people of Basilan as much as all the other areas. And finally, the concept of equity. I have been one of the strongest advocates of equity. However, I saw that equity was resolved by Congress when they approved the Bangsa Moro Organic Law that provided for seats based on the population of 100,000. We had always known that the mainland was roughly 30% to 40% more populous than the islands. Had the Bangsa Moro Organic Law provided for three seats per parliamentary, per legislative districts, then the mainland and the islands would have had the same number of parliamentary districts, just as the Regional Legislative Assembly had had for the past 30 years. But unfortunately, Congress had spoken and made it 100,000 per population. And therefore, in terms of equity, it was already decided by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. And as law-abiding citizens and those who live by the rule of law, we must support. And for all these arguments, I vote a resounding yes.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Don Mustapa Luong. Secretariat, please proceed.
Lorina Husi?
Madam Speaker, can I have a few minutes? My time to explain.
Yes, you have 10 minutes.
Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker, for that. Madam Speaker, as the only, as a member of the MNLF negotiating panel in the 1996 Final Peace Agreement, and one of those who worked out the agreement itself, and as a member of the Power Sharing Committee in the GFH-MILF panel, perhaps the only with humility, the only person who participated in the drawing of two agreements, and as a member of the Bangsa Moro Transition Commission, who in the final stages of its approval in the Senate explained to no less than Senate President Jesus Cudero that autonomy is not only a constitutional issue, but a political issue, it being a product of two agreements, I am discomported by the decision of the Supreme Court, perhaps bordering on a misgiving because the opponent of the decision was no less than our companion in the negotiating panel. Nonetheless, these are byproduct of what we call constitutional processes. The agreements may not have been fully grasped in the decision, but what can we do as lawyers? We have to abide by the decision of the Supreme Tribunal, the Supreme Court. Coming into this redistricting, I have misgivings. As a member of the BTC, the distribution of the island, of the region into three major island groups, as we called the areas, was intended to provide equity of representation at the same time equity of governance. But we have reached a final stage where we demand for a new entity, a parliamentary system that will work within a framework of a unitary system under the context of democracy. We, members of the parliament, must abide to that. Time has gone. We have fought for our self-determination, but we have reached the final stage of agreeing to finally pass Republic Act 11054, or otherwise known as the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. We must abide by that framework. Perhaps, to quote my good friend, my BFF, "Let us fight another day." But today, we are bound by our obligation in the parliament. We are bound by the constitutional limitation that has been imposed on us because, as provided in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, we have also to contend with national laws and national structure to include the Supreme Court. The decision of Congress to finally postpone the election set for the parliamentary elections of the BARM to give us an opportunity to grasp with the realities of the time, more particularly with the redistricting provision of the first redistricting authority we have, was also discomfortable to me because in the committee hearings, we have articulated for equity. We have articulated for justice because we believe that the Bangsa Moro is one and there is always unity within and among us. But reality is reality. Democracy has to abide in certain principles. The rule of law must be abided. We have to understand what they call majority decision. While I, as a political science professor, I also believe that the Hegelian doctrine principle could be a baby people who are misrepresented, but that is perhaps a battle for the next time. Coming into this with heavy heart, I have to support the redistricting law because it is a mandate required all of all of us. Whether we lose, whether we have an opinion, we have to consider that in a parliament like us, the voting is by majority. So, we have to abide with that. We agreed to a peace agreement to bring forth a new entity. We demanded for a parliamentary system where caucus and committee hearings have to help. And therefore, the time to say no and to move out of the parliament should be the last recourse that we have to adopt. Parliament is taken for the word parley. We have to discuss here so that the best minds, the best ideas could be articulated in this hall. Whatever decision it is, it should be motivated by our good faith to serve our people. Having said that, I vote yes because I believe we can have the first parliamentary election and allow our people to decide on our fate. But if my part ask, I have intended to participate in this election, but in the course of time, if equity is not addressed by the work of the parliament or by the hope of the governance, then let our people decide the future. The future, as Peter Drucker said, the only permanent thing in this world is change. Either it is change for the better or it change for the worse. But I hope and I pray to the Almighty Allah that he will have the wisdom to decide for the best of our people in our region. With that, I vote yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Plural Leader Attorney Joel Luraina. Secretariat, please proceed.
Makakuwa Abdol Rauf. Makapaar Abdolla. Malangbut. Mantawil Bailing. Mastura Isak.
Deputy Speaker Attorney Isak Mastura is recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. I just have a short explanation of my vote.
Go ahead.
I vote yes to the amended redistricting bill because of our duty to reappoint the seven seats of Sulu to the remaining provinces, cities, and municipalities of the BARM as provided by the law resetting the elections. Moreover, I would like to express my gratitude to my colleagues and this parliament for heeding the desire of the constituents of the municipality of Sultan Kudarat of the province of Magindanao del Norte to have a lone parliamentary district for our municipality. The passage of this law also fulfills the appeal of the smaller municipalities of Kabuntalan, Northern Kabuntalan, Talitay, and Sultan Mastura to be clustered to be clustered together in one district so that they can have a stronger representation without being overshadowed by the bigger population and constituency of Sultan Kudarat. Because originally, these municipalities were clustered in the same district as Sultan Kudarat. Again, let me reiterate my vote as yes to Parliamentary Bill Number 351. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you Deputy Speaker Attorney Isak Mastura. Secretariat, please proceed.
Matalamjaapar Apollo Mikail.
It's a jumbo yes, Madam Speaker.
Mendoza Prilin.
Uh, MP Prilin Mendoza is recognized.
Madam Speaker, Floor Leader, and fellow members of this parliament, as the lone representative of the non-Moro indigenous peoples in this parliament, I rise to explain my vote on this redistricting act. This measure is among the key deliverables of our parliament as we prepare to formally wind up our transition and install the regular Bangsamoro government with regional elections set for October 13, 2025. I recognize that this has been one of the most challenging measures we have undertaken. As a member of the Committee on Amendments and Revision of Laws, I witnessed the long process, the heated debates in committee and plenary, the challenges of quorum, and the persistent back-and-forth deliberation. Madam Speaker, despite this obstacle, we are bound by our oath to deliver. Madam Speaker, I may not be here in the next parliament to represent the non-Moro indigenous people who in terms of population are indeed a minority. But I hope that the future formal Bangsamoro government will always be reminded of the principles of social justice, equity, and corrective representation. We must move beyond the politics of number and embrace what I call the mathematics of social justice to correct historical exclusion, systemic imbalance, and deep-rooted inequalities. Madam Speaker, for decades, the non-Moro indigenous peoples have endured political invisibility, often overshadowed by larger groups. Despite our vibrant cultural heritage and deep ties to our ancestral domains, our presence in governance remains limited. While population figures often dictate political boundaries, our legal and moral framework, such as Article 7, Section 10 of the Bangsamoro Organic Law and Republic Act 8371 explicitly affirm the need for equitable representation, not mere numerical presence. Representation, Madam Speaker, is not just arithmetic. It is about justice, dignity, and historical redress. The non-Moro indigenous people are not asking for privilege. We are asserting our rightful place in shaping the presence and future of the Bangsamoro. To ignore our voice is to risk repeating the failures of exclusion that have long plagued this region. But to embrace our participation is to fulfill the very essence of why BARM was created, to build a government that is inclusive, just, and sustainable for all. Madam Speaker, stimkeleg. My vote is a resounding yes without reservation because the people have been long been waiting. As an expression of democratic participation, this long-delayed transition must finally be concluded so that the Bangsamoro government can be established. At the same time, as we remind the parliament and the future formal Bangsamoro government that the voice of our non-Moro indigenous people must never be left behind in this journey toward inclusivity and justice. Pio Bagi Muwag.
Thank you MP Prilin Mendoza. Secretariat, please proceed.
Mitimbang Mikail.
Um, MP Michael Mitimbang is recognized. One, one long two minutes, two, two minutes.
Thank you. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi wabihiinas ta'in. Wafat. Greetings to Honorable Chief Minister, Sir Abdol Rauf Sami Gambarmakakuwa. Honorable Speaker Ali Pangalian Balindung. Deputy Speakers, Majority Plural Leader, Assistant Majority Plural Leader, and my colleagues, the members of the parliament. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. At the outset, I wish to commend this August body for the continuing deliberation of Parliamentary Bill Number 351. This is a matter of great importance as it directly affects the structure of representation in our parliament and ultimately, the voice of our people in governance. As we move forward, let us be reminded of the guidance in the Holy Quran. In Surah Asura, verse 38, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Those who have responded to their master and established prayer and whose affair is determined by consultation among themselves as they spend from what we have provided them. This verse reminds us of the value of consultation, mutual respect, and collective decision-making, principles that lie at the heart of our world as legislators. Mister Speaker, as a member of this parliament, let us not forget that we are exercising the legislative power of the Bangsamoro government as bestowed in us by the Bangsamoro Organic Law. This is a solemn duty that demands both respect for the will of the majority and the adherence to the limits and the requirements of the law. Mister Speaker, indeed, differences in opinion are natural in the democratic and parliamentary system. Yet, while debates may spirit that, the outcome must be respected for the decision of the majority reflects the will of this institution. Mister Speaker and Madam Speaker, at the same time, it is our duty to ensure that in exercising our legislative power, we remain firmly guided by the law, the rules procedure, and the principles of the justice and fairness. Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker, may this parliament continue to be venue where unity is built on the respect and where legislation is anchored on both the rule of law and the will of our people. My vote is yes, Madam Speaker. Thank you and wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you MP Michael Mitimbang. Secretariat, please proceed.
Mitimbang Tawakal. Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Nurridha.
MP Nurridha Miswari is recognized.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, as a Taosog with a, with a heavy heart, my vote is yes because I believe there is hikmah in our decisions and in the decision of our leadership. InshaAllah Khair. But let it be known that our sacred struggle continues. Our fight continues. We from the mainstream Moro National Liberation Front, under the esteemed leadership of the founding leader and Central Committee Chairman, Professor Dr. Nor Miswari, we stand in unwavering solidarity with the people of Sulu. We stand for the integrity and the full implementation of the mother of all peace agreements, the Triple E Agreement, 1976 Triple E Agreement, and its implementing mechanism, the 1996 Final Peace Agreement. We stand for the unity of the Bangsamoro people as we honor the noble legacy of our Mujahidin and Mujahidad and all their sacrifices for the sake of our hula, our homeland, our bangsa, our people, and above all, our arama, the freedom of religion. That's all, Madam Speaker. Again, my vote is yes.
Thank you MP Nurridha Miswari. Secretariat, please proceed.
Mitmo Grasur Junior. Mundir Ali Rakim. Munyo Susain. Uranon Swaib. Pakasim Ubaidah. Pagayau Alindato. Pak Abdul Wahab. Pakasiurandup. Piang Ramun Senior. Rakim Amir Zakaria.
MP Amir Zakaria Rakim is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, I rise to cast my vote in the affirmative for the approval of BTA Parliamentary Bill 351 as amended. Madam Speaker, by approving this measure, we are making our parliamentary districts more equitable and balanced, consistent with moral governance. We are ensuring that representation is based not on outdated figures but on the actual population and needs of our constituencies. This bill is about strengthening our democratic institutions and ensuring that the Bangsamoro people are given fair, proportional, and effective representation in this parliament. More importantly, Madam Speaker, this bill affirms our commitment to inclusive governance. It recognizes that the strength of the Bangsamoro lies in unity and fairness. With this approval, we move one step closer to building a parliament that is truly representative of our people. Therefore, Madam Speaker, with full faith in the wisdom of this August body and in service to our constituents, I, as a son of Lano del Sur, vote yes for the approval of BTA Parliamentary Bill 351 as amended. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you MP Amir Zakaria Rakim. Secretariat, please proceed.
Salindab Said. Salik Ali. Simao Mariasir. Simarumyo. Shik Said. Sinarimbo Nagib. Sinulinding Kadil Junior. Sulaiman Ali. Sumagayan Aminuddin.
Can I have very short one minute, Madam Speaker?
Yes Deputy Speaker, Sumagayan Aminuddin Sumagayan is recognized.
Thank you very much. Uh, my vote is a resounding yes, Madam Speaker. Because I fully, I believe that the passage of this bill will align and will surely align with the community's needs and promote positive growth in our region, Madam Speaker. To our brothers and sisters from Sulu, I really feel you and I fully sympathize with you, with your protest, with the latest decision of the Supreme Court removing Sulu from the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. But what can we do, Madam Speaker? Do relics, said legs. The law may be harsh, but it's still the law. And Supreme Court decisions forms part of the law of the land. But instead, Madam Speaker, I would like to invite our brothers and sisters from Sulu to take this step forward together. And I pray that someday again, our brothers and sisters or the province of Sulu will again rejoin the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Also, Madam Speaker, I would like to, uh, my gratitude and commendation goes to the members of the parliament who really fought hard for the passage of this bill with the special mention to our two chairmen, chairpersons of the different committee, the Committee on Local Government and the Committee on Amendments, Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo and Attorney Fahani Uyuyud, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. Again, my vote is a resounding yes, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Deputy Speaker Aminuddin Sumagayan. Secretariat, please proceed.
Tan Nabil.
Deputy Speaker Nabiltan is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, Floor Leader. I vote yes to this amendatory Parliamentary District Act. At its core, my vote is grounded upon the very essence of our republic, to ensure that the upcoming parliamentary election will proceed. InshaAllah, this soon-to-be autonomy act will lay the foundation for more responsive governance by ensuring that the voice of our constituents, although without Sulu, is heard more directly through properly delineated parliamentary districts. Naturally, there will always be questions, legal or political or otherwise, that will weigh on our minds. that will weigh on our minds. May it be about contiguity or gerrymandering or whatever other issues we each have observed. Yet, the wisdom of the majority of this August body has already breathed life into the collective voice of the Bangsa-Moro. Further, I wish to put on record that our task does not end here, not only as parliamentarians, but even more so as Bangsa-Moro. I raise this because under our mandate, representation must not only be numerical in population, but also equitable. Therefore, this measure will ultimately be tested by how it translates into fair and proportionate representation for all our peoples across the Bangsa-Moro, especially the island provinces. For Sulu, I wish to manifest that I myself have proposed amendments to ensure that should we be included again, the Parliament will welcome us with open arms, no longer needing to beg for parliamentary seats as this law already provides the appropriate legal measures for such. Insha Allah, that time will soon come. I reiterate my support for this act, but I likewise manifest that we shall remain vigilant and continue our claim for equitable representation. We must ensure that no province, city, or community is left behind and that the districts reflect both our demographic, demographic realities and the right to self-determination over our diverse constituencies. With this, my vote is yes.
Thank you very much. Deputy Speaker Nabiltan, Secretariat, please proceed.
Sinarimbo Nagib.
MP Attorney Sinarimbo is recognized. Nagib Sinarimbo is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Um. I rise to cast my vote for this legislation. We have tried to shepherd the process ensuring that everyone's voice is actually heard. Given that we have listened to different voices, but in the end, as a democratic government, we will have to take political decisions. Political decisions are made by the majority in this Parliament. We may have our own positions and we can, as always, argue them. In my case, I have reservations on the separation of Sulu or the issue of equity in terms of representation between the mainland provinces and the island provinces. I also want to seek mechanisms that addresses the inherent imbalance in our representation. I will continue to pursue these advocacies, but for now, and if only to trigger the holding of the elections this October 2025, I vote yes for the law that reapportionments the seven districts of Sulu to give way to the elections this year. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you to the Chair of Committee on Local Government, MP Attorney Nagib Sinarimbo. Secretariat, please proceed.
Usman Azpar. Uyuyud City Fahani.
MP City Fahani Uyuyud is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Parliament Bill Number 351 may not be perfect. No redistricting plan ever satisfies everyone completely. Geographic realities, demographic variations, and historical considerations create inherent tensions in any apportionment or reapportionment. But this bill achieves what we must achieve. It preserves the eighty-member Parliament, distributes representation equitably among remaining territories in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. I, being the chairperson of the Committee on Amendments, Revision, and Codification of Laws, would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude sa lahat po ng sumuporta sa bill na ito and my utmost respect sa mga hindi naman po. Nakakalungkot na hindi mapagbigyan ang lahat ng sentiments, subalit ganyan po talaga because we have our processes and I am proud to say that we have observed those processes. In conclusion, Madam Speaker, my vote is a bonggang yes.
Thank you to the Chair of Committee on Amendments, MP Attorney City Fahani Uyuyud. Secretariat, please proceed.
Yakob Muhammad.
May we have the result, Secretary General?
Bismillahiwabihinasain. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam Speaker, the result of the nominal voting on third and final reading of the Parliament Bill Number 351 as amended, entitled an act reconcilitating the parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, amending for the purpose Bangsa-Moro Autonomy Act Number 58, entitled an act providing for the creation of the parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, as follows: Thirty-five yes votes, zero no vote, and one no vote and zero abstention. I repeat thirty-five yes votes, one no vote, and zero abstention, Madam Speaker.
With thirty-five yes votes, one no vote, and zero abstention of BTA Bill Number 351 as amended, or an act reconcilitating 351 as amended. Yes. Yes, it's 351. An act reconcilitating the parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, amending for the purpose Bangsa-Moro Autonomy Act Number 58, entitled an act providing for the creation of the parliamentary districts in the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, the BTA Bill 351 is now approved on third and final reading. Alhamdulillah. Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to state that the opening of this session, we have full quorum and since there are no other matters to be tackled in the order of business, but before doing that, I thank all of you for steadfastly maintaining your cool link and staying to this late hour. But with that, I move that we adjourn session.
There is a motion.
I want to suspend session.
There is a motion to suspend the session until
one o'clock tomorrow.
Any objection? Hearing none. Session is suspended until tomorrow. Bottoms.